So I'd like to call for the meeting of the Southboro School Committee, open meeting Wednesday, January 12th, 2022. First time I've used that date publicly, I guess. Time is 6:31 PM. The school committee is fully in attendance. First thing I'd like to do, our policy, actually, the school committee policy allows the chair flexibility in the agenda, especially the order of the agenda. There's a phone ringing, but I think it'll stop. So I'm going to change the order at the beginning. What I'd like to do is move up the first item as the old business item. And I think we have under that item, the before and after school care program. And the reason I'd like to move this up to the front is twofold. First, since the audience sharing will now come right after that, if there are any folks in the audience that, you know, are going to make a comment, they will have the advantage of hearing the presentation before, before that point in the, in the meeting. At the last meeting, it was a little awkward. I really had to kind of move it into the middle. I think the other advantage is the school committee will also be able to hear any public comment, which would come after the presentation by the district. So if no one objects, and I'm looking around for school committee hands, I would like to do that now, and I'll turn the meeting over to Superintendent Martino.
All right. Thank you very much. And just give me one moment to share my screen. And also, Keith, can you promote Katie Carmelak as a panelist? Just for a point in the presentation?
Yes, I will.
All right. Good evening. And, you know, the purpose of this presentation is really to continue the conversation that took place at the December 8th, 2021 Southboro School Committee around the feasibility study and recommendation to discuss whether it was advantageous for the public schools of North, of Southboro to operate the before and after school program. And just for the audience information, the school committee moved the decision to its January meeting, which is this evening, to provide additional time to have more conversations. So this evening is the follow-up meeting. So just in terms of the feasibility study, so the district took several months to do a feasibility study. We spoke with other districts, we looked at other programs, we looked at finances, staffing, to create a report. That report is available on the school committee website, and I will not go into it in great detail since it was presented at the December meeting. But from that feasibility, the district determined that there were some advantages to bring the program in-house, and those advantages were greater alignment to district goals, mission and vision, you know, access to programmatic resources, access people, facilities, and district experts, greater access to district departments, so human resources, technology, health, finance, student support services, the teaching and learning department in English Language Department, and greater alignment with district safety protocols and procedures, greater access to district professional learning and training, and ability to maintain low fees for families. So those were the advantages that were shared at the December meeting. And I think since that meeting, what time has allowed us to really think about was that it was really, we were looking at it as it is an either or decision, and it's really not an either or decision. You know, Jennifer Riel, an adjunct professor at the Harvard Rotman School of Management, promotes this idea of problem-solving integrative thinking. It's really taking the best from two options to come up with a successful solution. So we had many conversations with Katie Carmelak and really talked about, is there a partnership that we could form with SEDP? And we changed the question to, should the district operate an extended day program? Or to, can the district and SEDP form a partnership to offer extended day program for our families? So we really shifted our thinking and the way we are approaching this. So after many conversations with the SEDP chair, Katie, and, you know, we just, you know, we came to the conclusion that, you know, it's very important for the community to have community input and feedback into the extended day program. That shifting, at the December meeting, we presented a parent advisory. And from the last December presentation to tonight, we'd like to shift that from a parent advisor to a formal partnership with SEDP. And we do believe that there are advantages and disadvantages to every decision in the either or, in looking at and, in partnering with Southboro Extended Day Program really speaks to the longstanding commitment that it has had to the Southboro community and families. And it also brings onboard the expertise and learning that it's done over those, those many, many years. So the district is proposing to partner with SEDP board on programming, staffing, and finances will be brought under the district's responsibility. But again, that programming and that partnership with the board will be really important. All the details have not been worked out. Katie and I have had many conversations, and, you know, the next level of work, the next step is really to try to formalize that partnership. And we believe this solution really brings synergy between the strengths of the Southboro Extended Day Program, the staff under SEDP, and the district. And again, it's, it's an integrative solution that we feel supports what the community needs and what will endure in the future in terms of extended day programming. At this point, I'm going to stop talking.
Yeah. Thank you, Greg. I was hoping you'd... Yeah, I appreciate the, I appreciate the time, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the entire Southboro Extended Day Board this evening, as well as the Southboro Extended Day staff. We're excited and optimistic about this partnership that Greg has presented here. You know, it goes without saying, it's been a long and circuitous path to get us here. However, the steps taken were necessary to ensure that together we have formulated what we feel is the optimal program for everyone involved. That includes the community, the kids, and the SEDP staff. You know, as Greg said, and maybe not so clearly articulated, but we as SEDP board will support the district in hiring for this program, and will remain as a community partner nonprofit that oversees the programming aspect. So it's really important to us to maintain as much of the consistency of the program as we can. We're dedicated to building this long-term partnership that focuses on maintaining the critical aspects of this program that has thoughtfully served the community for decades. So we know that change is hard, and none of us want to see a good thing end, but we truly feel like this is not the end of SEDP as we know it. We're looking at this as the beginning of a new chapter, one that's focused on ensuring the community is heard and has a voice on how the program's operated, one that's focused on building bridges where the, between the schools and the program where maybe roadblocks may have previously been, and most importantly, one that will continue to provide our children with an environment where they can thrive outside of school. So our goal is, and always has been, consistency for the program and everyone involved, and we'll work with Greg and his team towards that end. If the school committee votes this evening in support of the school district taking this over, we as the board commit to this partnership, and we will do what we can to ensure the vision laid out before you tonight is executed. And lastly, while I have everyone, I'd just like to take a moment to appreciate the entire SEDP staff this evening. This has been tough for everyone, and we just want to know, we, we all know they've endured a lot, and we're very grateful for everything that they've done for our community, all of our kids, and for the program as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And yes, I think that, you know, I too want to acknowledge all of the effort and work that went into getting to this decision this evening, and agree that it, it was a winding path, and also want to thank all the people who were patient, and also the SEDP staff were, you know, being patient as we worked through this. One example of a partnership, as Katie had mentioned, was that, you know, depending on the vote of the school committee, one of the first action steps the district would take is hiring a director. And Katie and I have had conversations around the hiring committee would include members of the SEDP board on that hiring committee, and that would be our first order of action. So again, that's just one small example of the type of partnership that we would move forward with. So with that said, you know, the recommendation stands as I presented on December 8th. It's really, you know, I, as a superintendent, recommend the public schools of Southboro operate a comprehensive before and after school care program. But what's new is, and formalize a partnership with this Southboro Extended Day Program Incorporated. And truly, I believe that this is the, an integrative approach, it's the and, it's not either or, and brings the synergy between the strengths of SEDP and the district on behalf of our families, and most importantly, our students. So at this point in time, I will stop sharing my screen and turn it back over to Roger.
So I think at this time, I would actually move to the audience sharing or public comments, agenda item.
Roger, can I just actually interrupt for one second?
Absolutely.
I think it's important also to note that depending on the, the decision of the school committee, on the pathway it chooses, if it is a yes vote, Keith is prepared to present some more detailed information for families so they can expect what the next steps are and what a timeline would look like in terms of communicating to families and key action steps.
All right. And then we have quite a few people in attendance. I don't see any hands up. So I would, I do see a hand up. Kami Spazey, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yeah, I just, I know you're going to present more information. I just, I know one of the big questions lingering is, would the school, with this partnership, would there still be summer programs?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure that people have heard the question, the district has heard the question. I don't know, Greg, if you...
Yeah, I mean, I can answer that because of...
You should answer that. It's usually it's not appropriate for us to get into a question and answer at this period, but if Greg feels he wants to do that, please do.
So Kami, yes, the summer programming would, would be available to families.
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll mention before the next, the next person speaks, I hope folks, well, there is a frequently answered question document out on the Southboro website, not necessarily any need to have seen it by tonight, but certainly at any point in time, it'll remain there. I, I would recommend, if folks are interested in, in learning more, it's a pretty good list, I believe. Okay. Catherine Rose.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Good evening. Well, lest you think I'm a one-trick pony, I am going to use the first 30 seconds of my, of my comment to thank Team Trottier for staging a wonderful chorus concert. So I wanted to say thank you to Gary, Stacy, and specifically Carolyn Alzepidi, who worked so hard to bring back the music. It was really wonderful to be there. Shifting gears, I am thrilled to hear that the district has listened to the voice of the community that this program served and worked with the SEDP board to come up with a way forward for the preservation and hopefully betterment of the program. I applaud all the volunteers who serve on the SEDP board and the staff for their efforts. In the future, I hope the district and this committee will learn from this experience and take a collaborative approach as the first step rather than a last resort in the future. I do want to correct a couple things, though, that I found a bit misleading in some of the communications. Roger, you alluded to the FAQs, and I did read them carefully. It stated in there that the SEDP was not awarded the contract through the RFP process. The fact is, it was. The superintendent did send out an email awarding the contract to them on August 9th. It was only after some still unidentified outside reason, the district decided to cancel the RFP and launch the feasibility study. And honestly, adding a comment about how SEDP wouldn't have been awarded the bid on the first go-round anyway was unwarranted and, and really moot, because the district, after saying they didn't meet the criteria, then awarded them the bid in the end. These are the kinds of comments that are not really in the spirit of collaboration. Also misleading, in my opinion, in the FAQs is the assertion that the taxpayers paid in any way for my kids or anyone else's to go to extended day. Both Southboro and Northboro were given rental credits because of the low enrollment. That would have happened regardless of the provider. Further, I have yet to see any documentation that demonstrates what it actually cost the district to house extended day. My guess is it's not $80,000-plus, considering Northboro has a bigger program and uses more space over more schools, yet they pay only $56,000. I would also caution the language around profit-making. The FAQs state that the program will profit between $90,000 and $250,000. I hope you realize how much in taxes the working families in this town already pay, and keep that in mind when you discuss profits for a program that's not a nice-to-have, it's a need-to-have for the vast majority of those who use it. Not saying we shouldn't pay for the space, but why are we generating huge profits? The FAQs did say that the funds would be put back into the program, but I can't imagine what would cost, the program would possibly need an additional $250,000 for. Again, I'm thrilled that the program will essentially continue and grow stronger, but in the future, erring on the side of caution of more communication rather than less, and making sure your communication is accurate will be the key to fostering an environment of trust and working successfully with the community and your partners. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. It looks like no more hands are up. So why don't I bring this back to the school committee? I think first order of business for us is, do any of you have any questions for the superintendent? And at least based on what he's updated so far. I know that we've had a lot of information and looked a lot of information already over the last few months. Kim?
Um, I just a quick question with the, the partnership and the director, and how do you, does the director report to you? Is it...
Yeah, so...
Under SEDP?
So staffing, HR, will be district employees, and will report to the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, Keith Lavore.
And with the programming, do you see it as like, like a true, like, so, I mean, it's a different name, but do you sort of see it like as an advisory role, like where the director is working with the community partner to come up with programming?
Yeah, I mean, I think that director and, you know, working with the district team and the SEDP board, the partnership, really will determine, you know, what, you know, programming changes, if, if any, and, you know, what the highlights are and how we move forward. So it's, it's truly, you know, it's a partnership, it's a collaboration. And I think what was clear from, you know, many surveys was that, you know, parents want input in terms of the type of program that is offered and the type of experience students have at the extended day program.
And now, my last question is, do you see others, like other outside of SEDP, being able to be involved in that process, like other parents? Or my one thought was NSPAC, because of, you know, like, some of the things we've heard, um...
Yeah.
Would it be a, would it be part, you know, like, is it a big opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I think if you really look at, you know, one of the advantages, the district is we have those resources, we have our whole student support services team, and NSPAC is very closely connected to that work. And I think that's the expertise that we can bring to bear to the programming moving forward. So, so yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point from the committee? All right, what I'd like to do now is I would like to entertain a motion to approve the district's plan to assume the responsibility for the before and after school care program. I think a so move might be enough.
I will say so moved to that.
Is there a second?
I have an addition. I think if you read it as it was, as it was with the "and" statement, I would like to move that motion.
Go ahead, Kamali, and tell me how you, how you would like the motion to be stated.
That the programming for our extended day services be led by the district and include the partnership with SEDP Incorporated, that one. That's how I read the last page of our...
I don't want to get hung up on the language of the motion. I think that, that the motion is for the district plan, and there's a lot of things that are involved in that plan, including this part of it. So I think that unless people don't want to second my motion, which is basically to approve the district plan, you know, we can remove that motion and, and look at another one. So I'm back to, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Kim? Okay, so moved by Katura, and seconded by Kim. Kamali, if you'd like to amend this, feel free. Also, now is the time for any and all discussion on this matter, or any communication that school committee members would like to, you know, would like to provide. So I'm looking for any hands. Oops.
So I'll just, I mean, I think this is our time to, to sort of discuss, right, and say our thought.
Absolutely.
So I think that, you know, the way Katie put it is that this has been sort of a little bit of a winding and circuitous path, and I think that it's, it's ended up in a really good place. There were sort of a lot of moving pieces and obviously a lot of community healing about this, and I think that kind of arriving at this place where we sort of, I know, the best of both worlds in a way, where the district can use all of its expertise and its broad range of resources to really provide what I foresee as a really excellent program for the kids, and with the input of SEDP as it sort of is developed and goes along so that there's some continuity. And I imagine many of the elements that the community has been very passionate about, that SEDP has been providing, would also be included as it, as it moves forward. So I think that this is a, a nice partnership, that the way it's been envisioned. I think keeping the rates the same for families is very productive toward, you know, it's a transition, but not monetarily. So I think that's positive, and I feel comfortable with it at this point. I'm glad we sort of took the time to get to this point, but I feel comfortable with it now, and I think it would be good to let the district start really moving forward on getting it in place. So I'm in, I'm in favor of voting for this tonight.
Kamali, your hands up?
Yeah, just as a discussion topic, I, I wanted to comment that the time, the extended time that we had between our last meeting and now was actually very helpful in making sure that we had additional information to, to support our decision this evening. So, and I wanted to say also that the, the work of the, the team, the current extended day team, it doesn't go unseen and unfelt. I'm very intimately aware with the feedback from parents on the services that they provide. I feel them myself, and for those that have had challenges and hiccups, those, I am aware of those too. But I, I do think that what their, their team and their group can provide, married with our district services and the educators that we have and the staff that we have, is going to be a positive thing. So I'm happy to hear that recommendation. The other things that I, you know, want to note that I'll be monitoring and the rest of our committee will be, have more insight into are just the details, the detailed workings, and be able to have a bit more, the same level of oversight and policy and direction setting that we have on other areas. Now, the after-school programming will have that as well. So I think that's something that if you feel that you're, you know, we have a good team here, very caring and bright and long-term standing committee members. I think that we'll also do a good job of making sure that this continues in the future to be a positive. So, so that's it. I just wanted to add that comment, and I'll give someone else a turn to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Let me go ahead. First of all, I think I want to express a big thank you, maybe several thank yous. The district has worked very, very hard on this effort, and it's, there's no way for people to see all of the effort that goes on behind the scenes. So thank you very much to Greg and his staff. Also, a very big thank you to Katie, her board, and the SEDP staff. I think that, I think this, this is great. I think that one of the things that shows, it'll show, and hopefully, SEDP, that we have a lot of respect for the history and the efforts of the SEDP family, and I think they're going to bring a lot to the program. Certainly, and there's, there's a lot of things that we can talk about as far as benefits. Greg has done that. But I think foremost in my mind is that this will, I think it'll expand the program past the current capabilities, and limitations of the current program aren't, you know, aren't, that's not a critique of SEDP. I mean, they have a certain number of resources. I think this will provide the ability to focus more resources and expand this for the benefit of the children and the families of the children participating in the program. Maybe the two other things that I like about this are, it provides continuity, and I think that's one of the things that I heard over the last several months, as an, as important, and also a smooth transition to get from here to there, which is another one of the many things that I've heard over the last several months, and I won't go into all of the many of things. So... over the last several months. And I won't go into all of the many of things. So again, thank you to Katie and the SEDP family. And thank you very much for the district and the work they've done. And those are my comments. Kim?
I just want to, I think I would be amiss if I didn't, didn't mention this. I think in this time where we've talked, I, I think everybody in the committee has talked to like such a wide range of people and opinions. And there's a small segment of students and families that do not feel welcome in this program. And I think to Roger's point, like this is not like a SEDP problem. It's a resource problem. And I'm very excited that we can sort of partner with the district now and have that opportunity. I just really want to hear a strong commitment from the district that we are gonna, that this program is going to be a program for all of our students, right? Because I think that if we go from they don't feel welcome to also they don't feel, they felt unwelcome to join the conversation. And I think we all own that as a community, right? And I just think moving forward, I just want to hear, I want to hear that commitment from the district because I, because I think that the district has that in general, right? For, for school, I just want to hear that as we're like marching into this new partnership.
Thanks, Kim. Anything else? All right, ready to vote? We'll do a roll call vote. And if you have any comments before your vote, that would be fine. Katura?
I already made my comments. I'm just going to vote yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And I vote yes. It's unanimous. And again, thank you, everyone. Let us now go back to new business, which is the next item on the agenda, I believe. Am I correct about that, Greg?
Roger.
Would you like to make any, would you like to make any other comments before we move from this?
Yeah, I mean, I think I just two items. First, I'd like, again, and reiterate, you know, and thank SEDP, SEDP board and Katie for the partnership, SEDP staff and the district team for the work it's put in to get to where we are. I feel I'm excited about the future and the work ahead. There are two open items. I would like the school committee to vote the fees for the 22, 23 program and those are basically holding to the 20, 21, 22 extended day fees and those were in your packet. So we do need a vote for those fees. And then secondly, I'd ask Keith to just go through an overview of kind of next steps and work that we have planned. So the community has a sense of what to expect moving forward in the next few weeks and months ahead. Roger, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, you're right. I have a question. Thank you. On, on, on this request, do you need a fee vote on this tonight? I, I, I'm just asking maybe from the committee's benefit. I don't know that it wasn't a packet. I don't know if any members of the committee would like to study the fee issue more because it's a, you know, it's a new responsibility as far as the school committee has for this. You know, for this aspect of things, if, if the rest of the committee is fine with it, I'm fine with it. But the first thing I want to find out is is it, is the timing important of this before the February meeting? And if it is, it is. Greg?
Yeah. So I, I think that, and again, for continuity and you know, to allay any families fears that were, you know, raising costs and fees. I think it just gives them a surety that, you know, the, the fee, the fees are remaining as they are today. Could it, could it be moved to the February school committee meeting? I, I don't think that would be an issue in terms of the timeline. Keith, I would defer to you and Becky.
I, I don't believe that it would. Becky, how about you?
My only thought was if we were communicating to families, if they would want to be aware of the fees as they're beginning to think about their registration.
When does, when is registration underway?
It'll launch at the end of February.
Well, I don't, as I say, I don't feel strongly about this either way. I would really defer to other committee members for comment on whether or not they're comfortable voting this tonight, or they'd like, like a little more time. What say, what say you all?
No objection.
Kim or Jen? I see the hands up.
I, I think I'm, I'm comfortable voting on it because I feel like I, I've looked at the information that went out before and I double checked it against the current rates and, and it's my main question would be, as long as the district feels that it, you know, those rates are sort of, I guess, appropriate or, you know, what is something that, that we can live with that's going to work, then I, I feel fine about it. So.
Kim?
I think it's fine. I'm ready to vote for it. But I would ask to just confirm it's the same rate as families are paying currently. And will that also be the case for? Because I know that we have like the day, the day rates. But also will that be the same for vacations and summer? Will the, the fee structure remain the same?
Yes.
So I'm ready.
Jen?
I'm also ready, but I have, I have a question. Greg, we've talked about the additional services that would be accessible to families now that it's being brought in-house, things like enrichment, student support services and those kind of things. So how will those, if the rate is staying exactly the same as what's the rate for SEDP was in the past, but we're adding these, are we adding these additional pieces potentially enrichment now? Or how, and how will the cost work for that?
Yeah. And I think this is where, you know, we'd have, need to have more conversations with the partnership around what that would look like. But our intention is to, our first and foremost priorities is to kind of have that continuity of current programming. And then look to what other enrichment opportunities can we provide families outside of, you know, extended day offerings through the district. So I think that's a, that's a, a planning piece. Our intention is not necessarily to launch enrichment programming immediately, but give it some time and have more conversations around, you know, what type of enrichment program would parents be interested in having, you know, as potential opportunity for their children?
And, and those would be potentially additional costs for families who wanted to do that? Or it's unclear?
It'd be additional, potentially additional costs. And it wouldn't necessarily just be opportunities for just extended day families. It could be a much broader audience that we, we target.
Thank you. I'm ready to vote today, too.
Okay, more hands up. Kamali?
Yes, I was just wanted to confirm for Kim that yes, these are the same rates as current. And currently there is also a plan in place where anyone that is, requires additional help, they can apply for that. And in the last, that I would expect that would stay the same. I think I saw that in our communications to, to the school committee. So I am for that. And then also what else did I want to clarify for you? That there is potentially depending on offerings in the summer. As has been done in the past, you would get that information upon registering for the summer. And, you know, we can then, as a board, elect to vote or choose on, you know, if there's some, some new cost that we weren't aware of, then we can do that then. So I don't know if that helps, Kim.
Actually, I just, I have one more question, I think for Keith, which we'll probably cover anyway. But the register, the registration starts in February. Is that for fall 2022 or for summer? Like, who's doing summer?
We would be starting, starting summer and are hope to be launching both the summer registration and the 2022 and 23 at the same time. But that planning for all of that will have to start pretty soon. So
Okay, awesome.
We have a lot of work ahead. I, I don't want to say absolutely and definitively because the timeline I'm about to share, you know, is somewhat tentative, but it'll at least give you the primary things that we're trying to accomplish in the next six weeks or so, so that the launch would be possible. So there are some steps that got to happen before then.
Perfect.
Okay, so I, I just want to say that Jen's comments about potential enrichment and some additional offerings was really what I was concerned about. She just stated it much better than I did, as she usually does. So I think any, any benefit that we might get from waiting to get a little more information is probably negated by the fact that families would like to have, you know, this information sooner than later. So I'm supportive of taking a vote on this tonight. Greg, how, how would you like this motion to be communicated? What's the word you like in this?
So it might be helpful if I share my screen and the fees and then, you know, make a motion as presented to implement the extended care fees for 22, 23 school year. And again, this will be something that the school committee will need to vote annually, any increases. And again, this is part, part of that partnership and conversation with SEDP board around, you know, what do we need to do? And, and also the fees that you, that we're proposing this evening or recommending. The finance team has done a great job doing some financial forecasting and, and these fees do support the program moving forward. So let me share my screen. Roger, would that be helpful?
That'd be great. Thank you so much. I'm leaning forward to see it. Okay.
So the motion really, Roger, is the recommended rates for the fiscal year 23 hours follows for the district's extended daycare program.
Any committee members have questions on this chart? Kim?
Yeah. So I, so the, the question I had about the vacation and holidays, that was actually a question from a couple of parents and some wondering because I, I'm not really familiar with how it works now. Like, is that based off of this?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
It is a per day rate and it is $75 per day.
Okay. So if we could just add that in, Roger, to the motion.
I haven't even constructed the motion yet. If you, actually, I'd be delighted if you would like to make the motion.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that South Rose School Committee accepts the recommended fees as presented here for the before school program, the after school program and the $75 per day. Is, what is it? Becky, is it holidays and vacation? How do you say that?
Holidays and vacation, yes.
So $75 per, per, per day for holidays and vacation.
That's for the fiscal year 2023.
Get for fiscal year 2023.
Are members pretty clear on the motion?
Yes. So moved.
So moved by, well, so moved by Kamali.
Yeah, I'll second Jen.
Jen seconded. Okay, roll call vote. Is there any more discussion on this before we vote? Roll call vote. Katura?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
I vote yes, and it's unanimous. Greg, before we move?
So I'll turn it over to Keith now to just go over a, a timeline of the next steps. And again, this is subject to conversations with our team also as we move this partnership forward to make sure that the timeline is realistic. Keith?
Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, super. So this, like Greg has mentioned before, just highlights a couple of things that will be upcoming. There could be items added from this list, and certainly there could be items adjusted based on the progress that we make with the steps. But as you can see in, in order, what we'd like to do is we are preparing a joint communication with SEDP that will be sent out hopefully this Friday, if we can get that pulled together. And also by the end of the week, we will be posting for the director position. We've identified that very clearly as a top priority. And like Greg mentioned in his earlier comments, the search committee for that will include members of the board as well as the school's administration. And we do plan to conduct those interviews the very first week of February. Simultaneously and kind of in between that, we also want to get the advertising started for site coordinators and the financial support. The reason why one is dovetailed into the others, we want to make sure we have enough time for each of these postings to be out there. Typically, it is customary to have it at least posted for two weeks before any action is taken. Becky and the finance team is working right now on fine tuning the online payment system, and that should be ready by the end of the month. As well as the launching of a website and a draft handbook. We have made progress on both of those items. But we want to make sure it includes as much information as possible. So it could be a one-stop shopping for families as they're finalizing their decisions for the upcoming year and, and, and summer. Once we make the hire of the director, which we're hoping will happen very early in February, I will work with that person closely to prepare the advertising for the program that will be sent out to the community. And we will collaborate together on the interviews for the site coordinators and the financial support person, which will be necessary. Towards the middle of February, we'll begin the process of forming the parent advisory council.
Can I just interrupt you? So this actually is kind of a change in direction. So I think immediately we'll partner with the SEDP board and talk about what that partnership looks like. And again, in my presentation, the, the partnership is SEDP takes place of the parent advisory council.
Correct. I was going to comment on that, but I didn't want to change this because I knew it would already, was already posted to the committee. So thank you for clarifying. And then our hope is by the end of February that we are launching the registration for families to sign up for, for, for the program. So by the end of February, we should be full speed ahead.
Back to you, Greg?
Yes, it looks like we have.
Katura? I can't see. My fault. I can't see the order anymore. I'll try to bring that back up. Sorry, go ahead, Katura. My fault.
Okay, that's okay. I was just wondering, we may have seen this at some point along the line, but how many state coordinators are we looking at? And also, can you just outline what the finance, financial support is? Is that a full-time position, a part-time position? How, what's that, what sort of form does that take?
Greg, do you want me to start that?
Yeah, either you or Becky can fill that question.
I take the first half and Becky, you can take the second. How does that sound? We will have a very similar situation we have now where we have a site coordinator at each of the schools. So there'd be a site coordinator for Neri, Woodward and Finn, so a total of three. And Becky, about the financial support? And Becky, about the financial support?
In terms of that position, um, currently, the, um, position is a part-time position, about twenty-five to thirty hours per week, and we would anticipate that it would be the same.
Kamali?
I just want to say, uh, thank you for this preparedness. You had no idea that we were going to go in this direction and, um, but you know us and we have a lot of questions, and we want to get the ball started, um, and I'm glad that we have all this information tonight. Um, one of the things that I guess, um, will change, and I just wanted you to confirm, is that throughout the entire schedule that you have listed, behind all of that, like what's happening, um, concurrently is developing the formal partnership, um, and whatever, uh, agreements and, and documentation, et cetera, needs to happen, right? That'll kind of be happening behind the scenes throughout.
A- a- absolutely, and, and that will be, uh, very clearly stated in the communication to families by the end of this week.
Okay. And then I also just wanted to, um, point out that with everything over the past, um, years or two, um, I'm really glad that the rates are gonna remain, um, manageable, the same, because nothing else has, um, and on average, everything has gone up seven, ten percent, and, um, I think it's a real plus that we wanted to keep them the same. And then there's actually, sounds like this room that, um, we can stay i- in a, in a reasonable amount year over year. So, thank you.
All right, no more hands at the moment. Greg, shall we move it back to you, or?
So thank you, Keith, and, and I guess that concludes our, um, topic of the Public Schools of Southboro Before and After School Care Program, and I think, Roger, we can go to new business.
Okay, new business it is.
I think we have first updates from, um, each of the principals.
All right, I'll start. Thank you, Greg. Um, I'd like to start by acknowledging the Finn School staff for their flexibility and support as we worked through this very challenging period, uh, during the pandemic. Uh, we've all had to put in a little extra to make sure we get through each and every day. Uh, it's been, it's been taxing on us, and it's been the community spirit of the Finn School that's been, um, keeping us going. I'd also like to specifically acknowledge Trish Fruitman, the Finn School nurse, for her incredible round-the-clock work in managing our testing, responding to parent calls and emails, and caring, caring for all of our students and our staff, and doing this each and every day with a big smile on her face. I mean, she's an incredible person, and Finn is truly blessed to have her as our school nurse, so I just needed to, to say that. Um, just a couple of updates on what I mentioned last month, uh, regarding kindergarten registration. Based on the Southboro Census information that we were provided, Tracy King did mail out a hundred and fifteen letters to families informing them of the K registration process. Um, since the December mailings, we've had additional parent inquiries around the process for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. And I'd just like to state to any families that are watching who have not received a, a letter, um, that have kindergarten-eligible children or a child. And kindergarten-eligible means having, you know, your child turned five years of age by August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, we have all the information available on our website for registering, and you can call or email me if you have any questions. This Friday, we're conducting a preschool screening for our anticipated forty open slots for the end of this two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, two, school year for slot, for openings in our two thousand twenty-two, twenty, no, I'm sorry, for twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Just a little mind stall there. Last month, I mentioned in, about our care theme and our initiative uh, to support the dad of one of our first graders, um, her dad's been deployed overseas, uh, with his troop, and, uh, they did receive all of our packages and our care letters. And we have a photo posted of them, um, on our website, so we encourage families to please check that out. And lastly, I'd like to mention a fundraiser that Jeanette Morgan, our school, uh, Finn School music teacher is directing, and this has been the second or third year she's organized this. It's a textile recycling drive for the district whereby textile items are donated, um, and collected. Each ton donated has a dollar amount, and funds go directly back to each school's parent-teacher organization. Finn received about six hundred and thirty dollars, and the big winner so far in the district is the Melikan Mill School, who received a rebate check of thirteen hundred dollars. So, um, I would encourage parents to continue with that for the textile recycling. And that's it for the update.
Thanks, Clayton. Um, questions? Okay.
Um, so for Woodward, um, all things considered, we've had a, a great start to two thousand twenty-two. Um, first, I want to start by thanking Woodward Parents for being partners in the mitigation efforts, um, this year. And, um, you know, throughout the past two years, we sincerely appreciate the communication related to student absences, daily monitoring of symptoms, and for participating in the weekly pool testing. Um, everyone is really doing their part, and we greatly appreciate it. Um, just a little plug, if you haven't signed up for pool testing, um, a reminder was put out in my last newsletter, and I'd be happy to share that link out with any families who would like to participate, so, um, you can reach me directly, um, for that. Um, I also want to recognize Woodward's staff for helping in extraordinary ways, from our social staff, um, support staff, E S Ps, teaching staff, administrative assistants, and especially Kelly Kylie, our school nurse. Um, everyone has really done such an amazing job to support students and each other. Um, it hasn't been easy with the return, but, um, we've all come together in extraordinary ways, so thank you. Um, since my last update is part of our safe school readiness, um, staff and students participated in additional safety training, and last month, we successfully held an Alice Response Drill. Um, to continue our work around school improvement, last month, staff participated in an activity where we discussed the seven principles of culturally responsive teaching and how we can incorporate them in the classroom. Um, this work supported our school improvement goal for fostering culturally responsive and inclusive classroom communities. Um, this week, we began weeda testing for twenty-eight English language learners. I just want to thank Rhonda Webb and, um, Cassie Pierceall and the E L D team of educators for the planning and preparation, um, as we get into testing. Immediately before the holiday break, we held a food drive benefiting the Southboro Food, uh, Food Pantry and made a sizable donation just in time for the holidays. Um, our next drive will coincide with our February Care Theme of Generosity, and that's scheduled for Friday, February fourth. Um, last week, as a staff, we received, we reviewed our COVID mitigation efforts and adjusted practices to reflect recommendations made by Desi, the CDC, and our medical advisory team. Just want to thank Mary Ellen and, and her team for their efforts. I'm always keeping us safe and healthy. I appreciate it. As part of this, we've also adjusted our practices around recess during cold weather and still providing students with an opportunity to be outside, um, in the fresh air, even despite those really cold temperatures. And, uh, before we know it, we'll be sharing out MCAST dates, um, you know, taking part in MCAST trainings, and then presenting information to parents at a principal coffee. So, um, that's coming down the road, but, um, that's it for now.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, happy to share about Neri. As Clayton and Steve shared, uh, a big thank you out to our staff and especially our nurse, Deborah Parsons. Thanks to our S O, S O S for safety supplies that they've continued to provide to us, such as alcohol wipes for our indoor snack. Our staff has really come together and collaborated and shared ideas as we continue to make changes, uh, to ensure the health and safety for all. As Principal Muchi said, we started our access weeda testing this week, and thank you to Hope Cross for the, uh, great organization and scheduling, and Trorota Webb as well for her support in this. Um, in connection to Article One from our school improvement plan, empowering learners, in December, we focused on coding, and students really demonstrated a strength with this across the two grade levels. One of our fourth-grade students presented a coding training to his former fourth-grade teacher's students, and many of our fifth-grade students are continuing to expand their knowledge on studio.co.org. I was able to get into Mr. Wallack's class and play a few of their, the games that they designed. Um, let's just say I did not get beyond level two. So I wasn't as successful as many of the other students, but as they continued to share out their links in their Google Classroom, I am continuing to go on and trying to build my skills. Uh, for Goal Two, Equity of Opportunity, at this week's staff meeting, we focused on an overview of the district's D cap, the district curriculum accommodation plan, and we are brainstorming ways on how our teachers can use the D cap in their roles. And now my screen has frozen. I always have technology issues. One moment.
You want?
Uh, can Gary go, and I'll try to read?
I was just gonna say, yes, maybe we jump to Gary, and then if, uh, you're doing better, we'll get back.
Thank you. You want to interrupt me if you get back on, just, just give me the sign, so. So, anyway.
Are, are you back?
I think I'm gonna just bring it up on my phone, if you don't mind, because my, I'm afraid I'm going to get kicked out from, um, the Zoom.
We'll let you back in.
Okay, well, here I go. I'm gonna finish up and do my best. So for Goal Three of Healthy and Balanced Learners, this, on January third, we launched our three sixty-five Z partnership, uh, with their foundation, which provides ideas, guidance, and resources designed to encourage, inspire, child, and challenge individuals to perform conscious acts of kindness, um, and to make decisions to help someone in some way every day, and in doing so, to help perpetuate a community-wide kindness movement, raising awareness and personal commitment to helping others. So each morning at Neri, we've begun to recite our three sixty-five Z pledge of kindness, and we also recite the kindness quote of the day. We, um, have a new teacher resource co- corner right in our main office with many books that the foundation actually provided to us, which focus on positive intentions, acts of kindness, and in understanding and acceptance for all. And I really to just thank Kristen Tad for leading this initiative, the partnership, and where it's just in its infancy, but it's, it's proving to be really, um, a wonderful thing to bring into our school, and aligns with our Choose Kind theme that we've had for the past three years. Uh, other news, we welcomed Robert Holm Jr. as the mid-shift, uh, custodian shared between Neri and Trotter, so welcome to Robert. And in connection to the district's monthly themes, as we start to look forward to February and Black History Month, we'll be setting up a large display in our front hallway, uh, which was originally created by Mrs. Johnson, our art teacher, and it's, will highlight some, uh, of the famous black people in our country who have had a significant, who have made a significant impact. And Miss, um, Valverde Collado will be sharing about influential black people from around the world. Um, so she's, they're, they're collaborating together on that. Um, and they're also teaching, uh, they're also collaborating on, as we, as we start to look towards the beginning of February, which is World Read Aloud Day, our world language teacher and our art teacher are collaborating on some really famous authors of comic books, uh, that, that students will be drawing in art as well as reading about during world language. Uh, and just wrapping up with World Language Day, which is on February second, we're super excited. We already have six authors lined up to Skype into all fourteen of our classrooms. And, uh, the S O S has already provided a collection of books for each of our classrooms, and they've already started to come in. So we're, we're very excited. It's, um, it's been a busy month, and I'm, I'm grateful to be able to share with everyone, so thank you. And thanks for your patience with my technology.
Well, thank you, Catherine. Actually, I, I didn't notice your screen freezing or, uh, any audio change, and it sounds like you solved your technology problem, so maybe I'll ask you to solve some of mine, because, uh, I continue.
It's a lot of pressure, Roger.
Gary?
Thank you. Um, I would also like to thank Mary Ellen Duggan and our nurse, Kim Baucher, and the medical advisory team. We know that the work has been truly relentless, and, uh, their efforts have not go, gone overlooked, so we do appreciate that. I also want to thank our teachers for keeping everything together, demonstrating a level of flexibility and resi- resilience under the most challenging of times. Unexpected and extended, uh, teacher absences have really, you know, um, caused our teachers to circle the wagons for one another. Um, they've picked up additional duties, they've covered classes, they've prepared materials, they've prepared lesson plans. These small things go a long way in order to keep the teaching and learning going and the normalcy for our students. Um, I'd like to thank the, uh, S O S. They spent, uh, sponsored a faculty luncheon before the break. The gesture was, um, was very, was appreciated by all. And lastly, the generosity and appreciation, um, from our students and families before the winter break through gifts and notes of, uh, gratitude really meant a lot to our staff, and it's also a great reminder that we are fortunate to work in the district that has such a supportive community. Some highlights throughout the, the month of December, our Neck and Castle students, uh, worked on some vocational schools, putting, uh, skills, excuse me, putting together dry mixtures and mason jars. Um, this was spearheaded by one of our educational support, uh, personnel, Heather Hall. They put together gingerbread brownie mix and smores cookie mix. The goal was to, you know, uh, work on measuring, packaging, and delivering. This was also in conjunction with our eighth-grade elective, the Peer Power Program. We have eighth graders who, rather than taking an academic prep, will go into our Neck and Castle programs and work with these students. Um, I believe they delivered over thirty, uh, mason jars to staff. Um, the plan is to, uh, reboot this effort around Valentine's Day, so if there's anyone special in your life that you want to, uh, um, reach out to, let me know, um, and we can have a mason jar delivered. So, um, some other things that were, have been taking place, um, is we hosted two concerts in December. I want to thank Mrs. Alzapi, who, uh, who spearheaded our chorus concert, and Mr. Clark, who oversaw our band in orchestra concert. Um, when I look back at the, the last two years, and I think about how teachers had to adjust their practice, I think Mrs. Alzapi and Mr. Clark were probably had to make some of the greatest adjustments to their work. Um, you know, I don't think breakout rooms and ensembles really correlate, so, um, it was just a good community, great community event. Um, we had many, um, uh, parents and, and, um, students, um, there, and to see them spilling out into the lobby afterwards for pictures just was a reminder, um, of what were, uh, of good things to come. And, you know, it's just amazing to think the last time we hosted a concert was nearly two years ago. Um, our inter-scholastic basketball programs are up and running. Um, our boys team just lost, uh, in overtime to Melican on Monday. My understanding is the referee was from Northboro, but we haven't confirmed that just yet, so, um, uh, S O S sponsored a Christmas Carol for our seventh-grade students. Um, our seventh graders historically read, uh, the Dickens, uh, play, uh, during this time of year, and we've always gone to the Hanover Theater to see the play as a capstone project. We had to adjust, um, and we saw a virtual, uh, performance of the play in the auditorium. And our eighth-grade team did something new this year on the, um, on their early release day. They, uh, did door wars in which they created, um, you know, students had to decorate the, the eighth-grade hallway, and the theme was Winter Wonderland. Um, so it was a nice way to kind of send our students off, uh, for the break. Um, we also engaged in an hour of code. I'd like to thank, uh, Jen Devlin, who oversaw this. Students engaged in block coding, uh, using a drag-and-drop program. They also use coded, coding language, uh, through JavaScript. Students could choose from multiple programs, including Mario's Secret Adventure, Home Art, Minecraft, Star Wars, and Space Collision. So it was a great way to celebrate, um, some of our D L C S, uh, uh, D L C S, uh, work that, that has, uh, started throughout the course of the year. Um, we are also preparing for our, about fifty eighth graders to participate in the NAEP testing. Um, that is the National Assessment of Educational Progress. This is, uh, through the U S Department of Education. We have, we're gonna have fifty eighth graders who will be randomly selected. They'll take a standardized test in either reading or math, um, and this, this exam will take place, uh, sometime in March. I believe it's close to about ten years since, um, Trotter has been selected to participate in this. Um, this was going to happen last year, but it was suspended, so that is taking shape. Um, also in December, Dr. Lipton O'Connor presented to a workshop for our staff on the Castle Frameworks. I know many of the principals shared that, uh, in the previous, um, school committee meeting. Um, this is a multi-step plan and process. She provided, uh, an overview of, of our social mo- mo- She provided an overview of our social emotional learning goals in the Castle competencies, highlighting self-awareness, self-management, social where, social awareness, relationship skills, and decision-making. Dr. Lipton O'Connor, you know, due to the time of year in December, really talked about SEL as it applies to staff and adults. She emphasized how SEL is for adults and how to, and how it's important for us to engage in mindful reflection and work. You know, we ended the, the workshop by reflecting on positives from 2021, something we'd like to leave behind in 2021 and an attainable goal for 2022. Her work with the staff was really energizing and reflective and the, the feedback was very, was very positive. I also want to highlight Assistant Principal Stacy Mahoney's work with her staff throughout the course of the year. She's been promoting the work, work around restorative practices. This is really a shift in our mindset, mindset for teachers to help address student behaviors in the classroom. Really at the core of this work is, is relationships with students. She is trying to provide or build our toolbox for ways to create for safer learning environments to decrease unexpected behaviors in our students. The approach is that she's, you know, that she's worked with teachers is modeling expected language, taking advantage of one-to-one conference time with students and using restorative breaks when behaviors occur. Lastly, we are closing in on the end of first semester and we will be, you know, distributing our first semester report cards. We are working with our staff to do some reflective work. We're going to be asking our staff to kind of look at their assessment practices, their grading practices in student performances from 2019. What did their grading look like in 2019? And how do we compare it to that of 2021? And what does student performance look like? So those are all the happenings at Trotter thus far.
Thank you, Gary. Before I ask for any comments or questions, I'd just like to say that I want to express tremendous gratitude and appreciation to the staffs at all the schools. And this includes, by the way, principals and frankly, also the district. There is no doubt in my mind. Not just the, not just the, the constant pressure on the, the medical staff, nurses, but there's a lot of 24/7 efforts that continue, you know, throughout this district and it's, it's, I, I probably can't find the words to really express it. So thank you. Any questions from any committee members? Katara?
I don't, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say that, um, I think as maybe everybody knows by now, this is my favorite part of the school committee meetings. Because this is really, I mean, the updates from the principals and, and what happens in the schools is the most important thing. And just, just hearing all of that right now, especially considering, you know, that the challenging times continue and the fortitude of everybody to just keep going through all of this and, and focus on the things that matter and focus on the kids and just make things happen on a continual basis. It's just very impressive and I really appreciate the update and appreciate everybody who's making it happen. So thank you very much.
Kamali?
Yes, I also want to just share that I'm equally impressed and I'm grateful for all the hard work that's happening by the staff and teachers. And so I thank, we thank you for that. I know that not everyone is in agreement with how things get done, but I think that our vast majority of our students are happy, doing well, and we're glad that school was open and they are able to attend. Questions just about some of the input I heard tonight. For, let me see. I think it was Gary and Kathleen, when you talked about coding, that struck a chord with me. The coding classes at both Trotter and Woodward have, oh, Trotter and Neri, I've just heard really great feedback in my own house about, and more interest in that afterwards. And their peers have shown that as well. I was wondering if after that's completed, do the, is there a way that we could offer to families, here are some resources around and about town that you could continue this, the students can continue this practice with. We don't have to, you know, sponsor anybody or show any favoritism, but just, you know, maybe a list of other resources that they could continue what they've maybe started a passion, you know, started an interest in.
Oh, good.
Go ahead, Gary.
You know, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know if I have resources, but one of the things we are trying to do is, you know, in some of our summit of assessment pieces, you know, for the end of a unit, when students have, for project-based learning, when students have options, you know, what we're trying to do is encourage teachers to allow students to use some coding programs as part of their learning, whether it's an ELA or social studies, in order to continue some of that momentum. So I appreciate your saying that there's that enthusiasm. We did catch, you know, we lit a spark with, with some. I think, you know, what we are trying to do as a school is keep that momentum going, but in terms of outside programs or after-school opportunities, I'm not aware of, of many. Kathleen, what would you suggest?
Yeah, I'm not aware of many either, but I do know, similar to Gary, they're bringing, our teachers are bringing coding into the content areas. I didn't know that fifth grade focused on poetry, using coding, which was really interesting. The students enjoyed that opportunity. And I do, I also know that within their Google classrooms, teachers are posting what sites they're using or like coding.org or the one that Mr. Wallack has been encouraging his students to use. And they've really, really continued to build their knowledge and skill. So those are posted within those classrooms. I, so I do know in the past years that South Borough Rec Department has provided a wrap opportunities for coding. But it definitely something that we're continuing to, to develop. It is part of our DLCS standards, as Gary had said. And so the, any opportunities we can provide, we, we do.
And Kamali, if I could speak to that as well. So I'm coding actually start in with the, the B-bots and then continues with the recording robots at Woodward. And then they move on. So there is a nice through line between all the schools for a while. You know, it's a two-year experience for each student. At each of the schools, they, they do, you know, have a wealth of knowledge and, and we just kind of build on that experience from, from Finn and then Woodward. And then additionally at Neri and then to Trotter. So, you know, as Principal Valenti mentioned, as being part of our, you know, DLCS school improvement goal, there is certainly a lot of consistency there.
Can I just add that it's digital literacy and computer science for those of you who might not be familiar with the acronym, a lot of, a lot of acronyms in education.
And then this other question was around for Trotter Power School. I think that we started that this year or this, this academic year as a tool there. Is there, is there a hiccup or just, it just some sort of difference why for grading, you don't go into Power School? Or has it always been that way?
So Canvas had come first. So Canvas was our, our system that we, was well-established and that's the system which our, our teachers are comfortable with. It's the, it's the Google Classroom of, of Trotter in many ways. So it provides the grade book. It provides the, you know, the assignments. And so that was established. Power, Power School came out. We, we adopted Power School last year, which we're using for scheduling purposes, our student information system. And we'll be just disseminating our report cards there. So we have kept the, the, you know, Canvas is its own entity and Power School has its own, own function. Collectively, I think Power School has been a great program for us. It's very intuitive. It really has streamlined a lot of processes and systems and structures for us. And once, I think we're probably going to see more frequency with it. Once parent accounts are created, coming up this week, parents are going to be invited to create a Power School account that will provide the parent portal for, for report cards. So we will have a paperless report card system going forward. The other function that takes place is we're also, we're going to do some scheduling to Power School. An example of this is we worked with Algonquin already, where students and parents could choose courses for, for the, the high school transition. Would that streamline the, the process tremendously, but the grade book and updates of student grades will remain on Canvas.
Okay. Thank you for explaining.
Jim?
Kamali actually asked one of the questions already, so I'll just quickly say ditto to all of the thanks and I just think it's amazing to hear all of the good work, right? In addition to this like massive, like, you know, pandemic that's like weighting everything down. I just think, you know, kudos to everybody for like keeping those plates spinning. So yeah. Thank you.
Greg, do you have anything before we move to the COVID-19 update?
No, I think the principals did an excellent job communicating all the great things that are happening in our buildings.
They did. All right, moving to the COVID-19 update.
Roger, sorry. Can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Um, I know, is there an opportunity that he can speak to like a transportation update? Kind of, you know, he's not a principal, but kind of goes into, go into that before we go into the COVID-19 update.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
I'm looking to see. Yeah, I'm looking to see if we actually had that anywhere else, but it doesn't look like we do. Am I correct? So
That is correct.
Yeah, if I don't object.
Yeah, just, if you could just tie it into just as we're talking about the schools and how we've, you know, things have gone between December and January. You could also just give us a little update into transportation.
Yeah, I know that, I know that there has, I, I know that I'm aware of the, the challenges with staffing, you know, throughout this, throughout this. Whether it's an epidemic or endemic or whatever, but go ahead, go ahead, Keith.
Yeah, certainly. I, I'd be happy to. I, I really, I think that South Borough has been in great position. We have had no more than two buses that have needed coverage on any given day. And it does complicate things with things going to Algonquin on occasion. But overall, I think NRT has managed it very well. We are collecting a pool of substitute drivers in, in different ways and different methods that's allowing us to keep the continuity of service there. So I feel like we've, we've, we've done very well considering that, you know, coming back, we were very worried about all types of staffing. And we've even mentioned it. I know Gary even outlined that at the very beginning. I would say the same is true for what we've had with our bus drivers. So a huge compliment to them. And for those drivers that have had to cover, some of them had had to learn new routes. And that's where I really appreciate the students and the families and the teachers' patience. A lot of drivers have had to learn new parts of town and South Borough can be complicated in certain geographic areas. So if you haven't been there before, sometimes you have to do it a couple of times to, to get it right. But I think we're doing okay right now. We also have a lot of different contingency plans sort of laid out if we do have more drivers that, that need to be out. But I, I've gotten nothing but a lot of patients from families. I've received a bunch of emails and so far, so good, Kamali. So overall, I think I'm, every morning I'm waking up and I'm on the phone with NRT by about 5:30 to gauge the status of the day. And I've been pleasantly surprised at least for the last five days of school.
You know, Keith, I know you said you think we're doing okay. When I hear about the circumstances in some other districts and their transportation, okay, is, is pretty darn good.
I would totally agree and I would echo that. And that's exactly what I have heard from my colleagues in other districts. We are in a very good position, but you never know what tomorrow will bring. I'm going to get up early tomorrow and it could be a different landscape at 5:30 tomorrow morning. So I don't want to give us false hope that we're out of any type of alarm scenario. I would say we are, you know, in an alarm scenario where we are reviewing it and making sure we have the coverage necessary every given morning and afternoon.
Fair enough. Thank you. Any, any other questions for Keith about transportation?
And one more plug to the principals for helping me with the communication. They have been great when the need arises. They're also getting text messages at 6:00 AM. So thanks to them as well.
All right. COVID-19 update?
Right before I turn it over to Mary Ellen, I, I just will make one general comment and there's not always consensus on many topics, but I, I will share that. I'm sure there's consensus that everyone's longing for the day where COVID-19 does not need to be on the school committee agenda or something that we have to talk about constantly. And before I turn it over to Mary Ellen, I just want to thank, you know, everyone involved. There's no, there's no stakeholder who's not impacted by COVID-19 and the pandemic from our faculty and staff, teachers, leadership, our nursing team and family. So everyone's trying to do the best they can. And I thank all the stakeholders for their work. And also just want to acknowledge Mary Ellen. She's, she's been working tirelessly to, to maintain in our schools and make sure that they stay open. So thank you, Mary Ellen. And I will turn it over to Mary Ellen to provide an update.
Mary Ellen, could I just precede your update with a quick comment? I want to, I want to thank you. I want to follow on to Keith's, I mean, to Greg's comment about everyone's longing for the day when we don't have COVID-19 on the agenda. But I'm, I'm sure that Greg and you and some others are longing for the day when you don't get a lot of last minute emails from the school committee before the meeting saying, can you make sure you mention this part and this part and this issue as far as the COVID-19? So we appreciate the fact that you're willing to deal with some last minute requests as far as, as far as your presentation very much.
That's my pleasure. Thanks. I say amen to everything Greg said. We can't wait for the day when I don't have to join you every Wednesday that you have this meeting. So first and foremost, I need to echo what everybody said about the nurses. They have worked tirelessly through all this. They are on call around the clock, answering questions for staff, for parents. Their days just never end. They're all working right now, contact tracing, because our pool tests are coming in right now. So we're all behind the scenes still working at night. So Trish, Kelly, Deb, Kim, and then we also have our three float nurses who we would definitely not be open without them. They just, wherever we need them, they run to, they help wherever the need is. So that's Stacy Calabrese, Edie Bamberger, and Kathy Rosowski. They deserve a lot of credit also. So as you know, a lot of things change in COVID. But my mantra this week is although things are changing, there are things that have stayed the same since day one. And those are the things that we can all do and we all should be doing, which is wearing a well-fitted mask, keeping our distance, staying home if we're sick and testing if you're eligible. And then those things, we've been saying those since March of 2020. So I think although things seem to change all the time, there are some studies, some consistencies in COVID that don't ever change. So I think Greg, can I share my screen? Did you give me that privilege?
Awesome.
All right. Can everybody see this? This is our daily positive case count. As some people have noticed this week, I have not been able to keep up with the daily update of the daily case count. It has been quite crazy. And taking care of our students and making sure the people who aren't supposed to be in school are not in school and the people that need to know what to do. So it's been a crazy whirlwind since we returned from break. But these are the daily case, the case counts that we've seen. So from September to December 22nd, so that was 16 weeks. Our numbers were a total of 355. That's the column right there. For the two weeks from Chris, from 12:23 to 1:04, we had a total of 369 cases. So you can imagine we weren't in school for one of these weeks. So this was parents filling out forms, parents leaving messages. And we were trying to keep on top of it and figure out everything we needed to do. So that was a lot. And then this past week, you can see we've had 246 cases. So in two weeks, we had 369 and in this past you can see we've had two hundred and forty-six cases, so in two weeks we had three hundred and sixty-nine, and in this past week we had two hundred and forty-six. From all the reports that I'm hearing that we know we're hearing in the news that it seems to be maybe not a straight upward climb that we're on, where maybe our trajectory is angling out a little bit, so we can all hope that it will keep steadily slowly declining, um just for all of our sanity. But in the meantime, we can all do those four things that we've been doing since the beginning, so those are our case counts, um and we have our pools tonight are coming in and we have about seventy positive pools that from Monday, so similar to what we had last week. Um, the other important numbers that people are interested in is our vaccination rates, as you know, in um the definition of being fully vaccinated, or I think they're calling it up to date with your vaccine, um is the correct terminology now outside of K to twelve schools, so there's different guidelines, so outside of K to twelve schools you are fully vaccinated if it's um within six months since your second um dose of Pfizer or Moderna or within two months of your J or if you're boosted, then you are considered up to date with your vaccine, but inside schools, the definition has not changed, so if you've had two doses of um your Moderna or Pfizer or your one dose of J and J, you are considered fully vaccinated. For now, that could change tomorrow, but that's what it is for now, so our vaccination rates are going by the definition given to us by DPH and Desi for schools, um and this is what they are for um the Southborough Schools is towards the bottom there, you can see that Trotter is at the eighty percent. Mary is um seventy-two percent, Woodward is about seventy percent, Finn is about Finn K and one is about sixty percent, I separated those because there's only about four or five preschoolers that could get uh vaccinated, as you could see, well fifteen totally that are eligible for vaccine, so um I think just so that number looked a little bit more encouraging for you, for that the Finn students who are eligible are about sixty-two percent of them are getting vaccinated. We are having um we started last night with our first vaccine clinic for the twelve to fifteen year olds, and actually it was for anybody over the age of twelve at the Northborough Senior Center and we will have them for the next three Tuesday nights, I believe. There'll be clinics there, so there are still openings, if anybody's interested in getting their booster, if you're or your um first vaccine, any vaccine you need, you can get there, it's all Pfizer that is given at those clinics right now. And I want to remind everybody that the district dashboard is um updated weekly and usually by Thursday mid midday it is updated, so tomorrow we'll have the update, um but that district dashboard is on the um main district page. Last week, while we were on break, was it just last week? While we were on break, um the definition of isolation and quarantine, now the guidelines changed. Um, so we updated ours to align with DPH and Desi. Um, and so for those, I'll just review them, the changes that happened, um that isolation after you've been um diagnosed with a positive COVID nineteen test is a minimum of five days, and that's if you're asymptomatic and or your symptoms are resolving, so um you need to isolate the same, stay home, don't go out, don't have visitors to your home, all of those same guidelines stand true that they had from the beginning, but it's a shortened five day quarantine and um you can return to school or activities on day six as long as your symptoms have been significantly improved or resolved and you've been fever free for twenty-four hours without medication. You do need to continue to wear a mask at all times, except when eating or drinking through day ten, so that's the same in school, out of school. These are the same guidelines that um public health is following also. If your symptoms have not significantly improved, which we're seeing, a lot of people who are not ready to come back at after day five, although some people want to come back, they're really not ready to come back on day six, so um really, if your symptoms have not significantly improved or resolved, um you need to wait twenty-four hours until after they have significantly improved or resolved before you return to work or school. Um, no testing is required to end isolation for anybody, we did um there was a little bit of time there where we were having that, but we decided to align strictly with DPH and Desi guidelines and not require testing through um and isolation, the only people in the school system who need to test to end their isolation are the school nurses. And they need to have a negative antigen test, um if they want to return before day eleven. Um, so on the six to ten day, the day six to ten, when people do return from isolation or quarantine um they need to mask at all times, this includes when they're outside um if they need a mask break, they can step away from everybody outside and take their mask break. Um, the masks must be well fitted, multi-layered, no gaiters, bandanas or mesh masks are allowed. Um snacks and lunch will occur as they normally would in our schools in Southborough, we are all six feet apart for snacks and lunch, so um really, that's the safest way to be, and then water breaks can occur in the classroom, um as long as they step away from everybody else. In school close contacts, what changed for this is um there are only two options, if you're in in school close contact, and that is test and stay or a five day quarantine. So the test and stay sites are open every day from six thirty to eight thirty, and they've been busy, they've been cold the past few days, but they are still up and running every day. For out of school close contacts, um this also is a five day quarantine, out of school close contacts of those are unvaccinated or partially vaccinated people, sorry for the test and stay in quarantine. Out of school close contacts are not eligible for test and stay, test and stay is only for in school close contacts, I think that's um confusing. Think another important um note to make is that if anybody is symptomatic we do require a PCR or a medically proctored antigen test to return to school, whether you're vaccinated or not. Um, fully vaccinated close contacts do not need to quarantine unless they are symptomatic. Um, they should test on day five after their exposure and diligently monitor for symptoms. Um, if they have any symptoms, stay home and get a test. That's for everybody, if you're symptomatic, please stay home, this is what we're seeing, um that people are coming back to school too soon, people are coming to school sick, um that would be the biggest message that I would send, please stay home if you're not feeling well, um that's the only way we're gonna get ahead of this. Um symptomatic individuals should stay home and get tested, you can return to school when your symptoms have improved or resolved for twenty-four hours and you're fever free for twenty-four hours and either one of the following, you have a negative PCR or medically proctored rapid test. You have a medically documented alternative diagnosis without COVID testing or you do a five day quarantine and return to school on day six. Um, we highly recommend that you participate in weekly COVID safety checks for all of those scenarios above, whether you're close contact quarantined um or symptomatic. Um, important thing to note, um just for general knowledge, if you do a home antigen test and it is positive the public health, uh Department of Public Health has no knowledge of that, so if you do a home antigen test um and you have questions, um you should let your school nurse know, if you have questions, you can ask your school nurse, you can ask me, or you can call the Board of Health. Um, if you have a medically proctored rapid antigen test, that would be put into our state database, those are like the ones that test and stay or ones that you have done at CVS or at your doctor's office, if it's a med- medically proctored rapid antigen test, it all gets into the state database and your Board of Health and public health do get a record of that test. Um, and all PCR tests go into that same database too. So individuals have tested positive in the past ninety days. You are free from all quarantine and testing um at this point in time, I'm not sure if Omicron is gonna change that ninety days to a little shortened bit, um but it has not yet, so um so for ninety days after you test positive, you have a free pass from all testing and quarantine, if you're symptomatic in those ninety days, you should um seek the advice of your healthcare provider. You do not require testing at this time. Um, if you're identified as a close contact in those ninety days, you do not need to quarantine or participate in test and stay. And you can resume participation in the weekly COVID safety checks after that ninety days has passed. All of this information is in this wonderful parent resource that is available on the school website. Um, every nurse has it, add it to their signature um on their emails, and it is on the district website, so this resource has about everything you could ever want to know, all in one chart. Um, all of the links and whatnot, um the dashboard has a lot of links on it too, it has a Q and A um FAQs, all of the things that I went over tonight about isolation and quarantine are in the updates from January third. So I think that's it for me, and I'm sure this question, so I'll be happy to answer questions.
Um, I have one, um back when, and I guess back when is a moving target as we work our way through this. The uh this, the eighty percent threshold for a school actually had some significance related to masking, I believe, but uh things have changed, haven't they, as far as um uh masking requirements of based on the state Desi's, I think we only have one, it looks, it looks like the Trotter is now surpassed that number, but I'm curious if it has really any effect anymore. You're you're muted.
Oh, sorry, the um Department of Elementary Education, Secondary Education, the Commissioner did just extend the mask mandate through the end of February, um but our school has filled out the attestation form that if we um reached the eighty percent, it was a local decision whether to remove mask or mask policy or not, right now we have a mask policy um in place and the subcommittee is reviewing some of those policies about masking, um so but right now our policy still stands that we require masking, and I think both of our towns have or are imminently implementing an indoor mask mandate.
So Mary Ellen, I'll just add that um the only district that we submitted that attestation form to the department is at the high school level, we've not submitted a form for pre-K through eight at this time. So we are still under the requirement of um Desi's masking mandate through February twenty eighth.
Second question, uh I I see your hand up Jen, but the second question is related to the ninety day uh period, now does that, is that only related to um you've had COVID, or is there any other characteristics that um you know, are significant or insignificant regarding vaccine? You you know, as far as that ninety day period is concerned.
Nope, it's just if you've had it, if you've tested positive.
Period, okay, uh thank you very much, Jen, I saw your hand up next.
Yeah, I have a few different questions, I can you, uh first of all, I guess, can you speak to um the impact of COVID on staff and teachers and how, you know, how we've been affected? Um, how we're managing that in terms of staffing and other pieces, and as part of that, I just have a question, this is based on something that someone a parent had posted about masks, um uh given the fact that Desi potentially sent incorrect masks out to districts, um are we, I just wanted to clarify are we providing teachers with the appropriate correct masks apart from what Desi sent? That's my first.
Mary Ellen, you want to take that?
Sure, I can start, you can jump in, um or whoever wants to can jump in with me, as far as staffing, we are monitoring it daily. Um, wa- watching the trends, um the principals have been innovative, um I think with their staffing they keep a track of it and um Central Office Greg has, Vincent and I have been looking at the trends every day and we haven't gotten to the point where we needed to um close or go remote for a day, everything, you know, we've been able to support our staff as we could, and the teachers have, you know, stepped up, I think, you know, everybody's doing what they need to do to cover the absences. I think we saw they're trending down in most schools right now, so but
Um, today um that the staff absences range from ten percent to two percent, um so Trotter had two percent, Mary had five percent, Woodward was a little over six percent, and uh Finn um was about ten percent, so we are managing with those numbers and and those have been steady uh for the most part, when folks come back, then we have another whole cadre of people who who go out, so um we've been able to accommodate, and I think Clayton mentioned at the start that our staff have been outstanding in terms of you know, making sure that they're partnering with each other and supporting one another and covering, so we've been, we've been um we've been doing fairly well, knock on wood in Southborough compared to some of our counterparts in districts in in Northborough and the region as well as um in our local region.
And then as far as the masks go, I think that um we all have heard the news that the the mask they sent, they said where they were um tested um and that they were a certain grade and provided a certain amount of protection and they were not, though some of the ones, we've got two different kinds of masks, Keith was looking into it today, um so we did receive the ones that are in the news, um and we've had those, those came from Mima at the beginning of the year, also, we've had them, actually since last year. We had a case that the fire department gave us, um that they got from uh Mima. So um they, uh what I did hear is that Desi is in the process of having those masks retested all of the ones that they gave out to see what the efficacy of them really is. And then, um so I can't speak specifically about the two different kinds that we got, but what I can say is that I truly believe that if you have a well fitted mask that is multi-layered and you can wear it comfortably and it fits you well, I think that that is the best mask for you right now, whether you need to double mask whether you use a surgical mask and a cloth mask um or two surgical masks or a surgical mask and a KN ninety-five, whatever you need to do, I think it's a personal choice and that's what you need to do to stay safe, it needs to be multi-layered, um you can double them up if you want. Uh, but I think that um that's, that's what it needs to be, you need, it needs a well fitted mask is one of your best defenses.
Um, my second question actually is related to masks too, and sorry, my cat, it always loves to be on Zoom every school, he's never here except when I'm on Zoom, um but I in terms of kids, you know, for families who might have like a financial hardship or or you know, it you know, the recommendations being that, you know, it's better to have these like disposable or N ninety-five or K ninety-five masks. Is there any way for family, those can get expensive, right, is there any resource for families to be able to get access to higher quality masks? Um, I don't know the answer to that, if like whether through the school or through like state, or if you've heard of anything like that.
Um, for child sized masks, we have supplied them throughout the year for our schools, for students who need them. Um, we do have a supply right now, Becky, we order them on a regular basis, the youth size masks for our elementary schools, um the middle schools have the youth size and middle school and the adult size, um I think they use both, uh but the supply is there for anybody who needs it.
Great, thank you, um and then my final question is about the pool testing, um what can we do to get people to test, to enroll in the the, you know, we have these programs set up that are here to help um keep our students safe and our families safe, including the pool testing, and I know that, you know, sometimes with some of these tests, they the results are negative for a while, but is there anything that we can do better as a district to try and enroll more parents and families and kids into the pool testing? And so, and reasons that you've heard that people don't want to potentially do this, because it's still fairly low, given that it's a free and relatively easy process.
Well, I think we saw an uptick when we got back from break, um we had, we were averaging between eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred for the district for a week, um we went up to twenty-one, twenty-five, I think, last week, and this week was about two thousand. Um, we have to remember there are almost a thousand people that are not eligible to test, correct? All those people that tested positive are not eligible to test, so that's a thousand that we would take right off of our eligible people, um so I I haven't had the capacity to actually uh do the numbers to see what the percentage is, uh the for each school, the participation, but um we have twenty-one hundred, twenty-two thousand people, three thousand out of, um I don't know what's our total number, Greg.
With employees about six. With employees about six thousand.
Yeah, so about half, I would say, eligible people. But I think that maybe a grassroots effort, because, you know, like we are all really, we've done everything. I, I feel like we've done everything we can, we promote it every time we can, we put it in all of our news. You know, if you're a close contact, we're like, we recommend you to sign up for pool testing. If you're, you know, like in all of Greg's newsletters that he sends home every week, he's like, here's the information about pool testing. It's right on the website, like I said, we did see an uptick of about two hundred, two to three hundred, right? When we came back from break, will it continue to rise through all of this? I'm not sure, but we can, I think the grassroots, if all of you push it, you know, if all of our parents, you tell two friends and they tell two friends and so on, you know, I think that would be the way that we're gonna get it done.
Thank you.
Kim?
I just have a quick question about contact tracing. And how overwhelming is it? And are you, is there, so I think some neighboring districts have just like thrown in the towel. And I think Inquiring Minds went to know if like we're headed that way, or if you see that as really like a big like mitigation effort.
I do believe that we have not thrown in the towel, I'll put it that way. I think that we, we did talk yesterday at medical advisory team about we need to do what's sustainable. And but what also keeps our schools low risk, right? So we need to do, I think throwing in the towel is not the answer, that's my, where I stand on it. I think that we need to look at our high-risk situations, like not in Southborough, because lunch, lunch is probably the highest risk, right? Everybody's unmasked, but we're six feet, we're at, at the high school, they're not six feet. So that would be high risk, our vulnerable populations, we need to look at that. Think we have taught, we're in communication, I'm meeting with the boards of health tomorrow or Friday because they have a grant and they're willing to share the people that they got through that grant to help us with contact tracing in the schools, so we're not gonna throw it in the towel.
Yeah, that's great. And then when you guys talked about how many staff, like the percentages of staff missing today, do you know, like, like pre-pandemic, like on average, how many staff is absent anyway?
I think the principals would probably be better able to answer that than.
I mean, two percent sounds kind of low, is that?
Yeah, I mean, it is typically two percent, you know, two to five percent is a typical day. And it depends on the season and time of year as well.
Okay, and then.
Can I just, I just add too, Kim, that I think also what, what it's, you know, we have a variety of staff. So when we talk about that percentage includes, you know, all the varied positions that we have in our district from, you know, cafeteria folks to custodians to ESPs to educators. So it represents all employee classifications.
Right, it's not like ten percent of classroom teachers are missing necessarily. Okay, and then the last thing is, I, can we just clarify? Because I think I heard this, but I just want to make sure that staff have access, have had access to the masks beyond what Desi provided or didn't provide.
We have, they have had access to surgical masks, level two surgical masks all along. So we have ordered level two masks, level three masks, so what are medical grade, like operating room surgical masks, right? So nurses have level three masks, the staff have level two masks and they have, and visitors get level one masks. So that's how it goes. But I think the KN ninety-fives are available and it is a personal choice if they want to do it.
Okay.
And we don't know about, like, we got ones that are single masks that are black. And then we got the packages of five of the white masks, that are the ones that are in the news. We, I don't know much about the, the black ones that are the single ones that we got, but Keith and I were looking into that today.
Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
It's, did your hand go up and down?
It, it went down, my question was answered, thank you.
Okay.
I think with the masks, Roger, just to add in, Becky and I have learned throughout the past two years that when you order masks, you're really not always sure what you're gonna get, right? So, or where they're gonna come from, or what the quality is going to be. We did order masks for the staff the first time around and we did not get what we ordered. And so those were put out for spectators at sports, they're good, you know what I mean? Like they were just, they're the ones that are in the lobby now because they weren't the grade we wanted. But we, a lot of times when you order an S P P, you cannot return it once you get it. So we had thousands and thousands and thousands of masks that weren't up to the quality that we wanted for our teachers. So I think that that's what we, we need to remember. So we, Keith and I did talk about looking into different KN ninety-fives today, so that's still on the tables. But we're gonna hopefully see what the testing that supposedly is being done shows.
And I suspect that there's still a bit of, you're not even sure when you're gonna get them sometimes. I mean, or maybe that's getting better as far as being able to depend on delivery dates.
Well, it depends on what you order, and I think.
All right.
They don't always match the picture in the book.
Can I just ask, related to that, so the state doesn't give any guidance about where you should be, you know, because there is a lot, there are quite a few sites that are selling these K ninety-five masks that aren't really legitimate K ninety-five masks. So do we not get any assistance or help with, like, these are the reputable places to order them from and help, you know, assistance with that? Or is it just every district's on their own?
I think Becky could answer that, there are, there are things, places we can order from, but, you know, like that we typically order from. But, you know, this was, we learned as we go, right? So that was at the beginning when we.
Yeah, what Desi did eventually was put together like a statewide contract list for districts because districts were running into the same problem we did, and it's been very helpful for us. Thank you.
All right, Mary Ellen, thank you very much for this update and, and for all, all your efforts and your, your staff's efforts.
And I'd also, before I, before I, I get off my soapbox, I can't thank the medical advisory team enough. So they really, they are willing to meet like over break, they, on a Sunday night, on a Friday afternoon, on New Year's Eve day. So there was a lot of times that they really have just been there to support us throughout all of this, so.
Now, I noticed, I don't know, is that a lead-in? I noticed that there's a bullet on the agenda, but I don't really know if there's any presentation from, from them tonight.
Great team.
All right.
But I will add that, you know, in terms of pool testing, so the pool testing is now on the first day of each school week. So Tuesday of next week, we will have pool testing. And if families would like to participate, again, there's information on the website and we encourage families to participate. It is helpful for us as a district to maintain our schools and make sure they're open.
All right, well, I was saving my thank you to the medical advisory team, but I'll just do it through Mary Ellen tonight, all right. We done, folks, on this, so legislative update?
So no updates at this time?
Did we move to Rhoda for the English learners' presentation?
Yes, so we have Rhoda Webb, our Director of English Learners and Equity, here to provide her annual district English learner development program update, so Rhoda.
Thank you, good evening, am I able to share my screen? Yes. Slideshow. So thank you for our opportunity of sharing an update about our English learners this evening to the school committee. The English learner program in the United States was started with federal civil rights cases. And what you see here are Massachusetts state regulations. There are several guidance documents that districts in Massachusetts must have in place to address our English learners. What you see at the bottom, the Massachusetts Blueprint for L Success, the Department of Education has a lot of resources there for districts. And the English learner data dashboard has a lot of dis segregated information as well. But it's only good as of last year. And what I'm presenting tonight is this year's information for our school committee. As a reminder, a definition of English learners, and this is a state definition, which is a very simple one. An English learner is a student whose first English, for first language is not English and who is currently not able to perform ordinary classwork in, in English. Of course, learning a language is a lot more involved than that definition. And it all starts with getting to know our students. All families in our schools complete a home language survey. And if a language in addition to English or other than English is answered in the survey, the Department of Education requires us to screen the students for language proficiency. And this is to ensure that children have the right access to learning in our classrooms. And the language proficiency screeners that we use in our district for preschool, it is called the pre-las. And we're doing this with four-year-old students and five-year-old students in our preschools. And the WIDA screener is what is required from kindergarten through grade twelve. We also have family conversations which are student-focused, because our families know their children the best. And they are able to tell us the linguistic knowledge of their children, how many languages are spoken in the home. And also describe to us about the cultures as language and cultures cannot be separated. This is very important information for us, as it's very important for children to grow up with their home language. And this also addresses their social, emotional well-being and to be, be able to stay connected to their families and to their communities. If a student according to the screen and according to the Desi guidelines qualifies as an English learner, families receive placement letters in English and in their home language when necessary. All this process of this screening students and going through home language surveys and talking to families takes over two hours per student. What we will take a look at now are the district trends and show you data for this current school year. So this is the graph that I've been showing over the years, over the years about the trend analysis that we see from when we started counting English learners in Southborough. And the, the information was frozen on the first of December. So on the first of December, the darker green lines, blue-green bars rather, there were eighty-seven students, English learners in, in Southborough. And that is pre K through eight. The lighter green, blue-green bar means the former English learners, that is the students who we have reclassified. And there are thirty-six currently in Southborough. Out of those thirty-six, ten students are in their first year of monitoring, nine in the second, three in, nine in the third year of monitoring and eight in their fourth year of monitoring. We have to by law monitor students for academic progress for four years. The next piece of information to share with you are the languages spoken by our English learners and our former English learners. This is not the totality of Southborough, that would be a first language, not English. But that is not what we are taking a look at tonight. There are many more languages than what I have listed here. But what this shows you is the richness and the multiplicity of languages that we have and continue to have in Southborough. Chinese, Portuguese, Arabic, Russian, Spanish and Japanese and Vietnamese continue to be prevalent languages, followed by Cantonese, Hindi, Korean, Urdu, Armenian, Croatian, Czech, Dutch, Gujarati, Malayalam, Tagalog, Thai, Liberian English, Marathi, Mongolian, Polish, Romanian, Tamil, Telugu, and we have Pashto to add to the languages as well. This is an asset to a district, it's an asset to our classrooms and our schools. And we view languages as means of communication and not barriers. And that's why we provide interpreters and translators to families whose first language is not English, so that our families have full access to their children's education. What you see in this graph is an analysis of, again, freezing in, in time, the language proficiency levels of our students K through eight. We have thirty-five percent of our English learners at the foundational level. That is the first three bars that is comprised by the levels of entering, emerging and low developing. That goes from students who don't know any English at all to maybe a few words, to students speaking in simple sentences at a low developing. And as I said, that's thirty-five percent of our population. And at the transitional level, we have sixty-five percent of our students. That's going from a high level three all the way to level five. There is nobody at the level five, that's why it's at zero percent, because we are able to reclassify students when they reach level four, and I'll speak about the reclassification guidelines in just a minute. Students at the foundational level are receiving more English language development instruction as there is more language that they're learning in English, while they are also learning content in the classrooms. At the transitional level, the expectations are a lot higher for the students. The linguistic complexity that they need to achieve also is a lot more sophisticated. So very important instruction is taking place at those levels as well. Now, we're gonna describe how we work with our multilingual students who are learning English. The model that we have and one of the models that is permitted in Massachusetts is called Sheltered English Immersion or S E I program. It is formed by two components, both of them equally important for our children. One is sheltered content instruction, and this is taught by content area licensed teachers. And at this point, all our teachers are S E I endorsed. That is the course that teachers need to take in order to scaffold instruction with high academic levels for English learners. This is level three and up, it does not include level one and two learners. And that's for them to be able to access a grade level content in the classroom. And this happens throughout the school day. Equally important is ESL or English Language Development, and this is taught by ESL licensed teachers. This is a core subject for our English learners, since they're needing to learn the English language as well as learn the content in the classroom. We are very fortunate to have highly skilled English language development teachers who are experts at developing language in the sophistication of that each language has and really become the lifeline to students, especially to our newcomers who are new to our schools, who are new to the language, and they're trying to navigate life in their new country. So we have targeted amount of times that we work with our students in developing their, their English language. We follow the WIDA frameworks, and this is done through systematic, explicit and sustained focus on language and literacy, developing in all, language and all the content areas. In the spring of last year, we, WIDA released new WIDA standards, they updated their standards. As you can see, these are big ideas, which is equity of opportunity, integration, collaboration, and the functional approach to language, in that language is always a means to communication. And we're looking at listening, speaking, reading and writing. And we're looking at listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And this aligns very nicely with all our strategic objectives in our strategic plan. This is just to give you an idea of what a curriculum unit looks like that is taught by our English Language Development teachers. This is at the elementary level. The unit plan is ecosystems. And you can see that there are focus goals for the for the lang- for each unit. In this case, there are two focus goals, which is discussed by identifying evidence from an ecosystem. And goal two explained by describing cause and effect, supported with reasoning and evidence. There's a connection to our curriculum frameworks. There is how the students are going to apply their the knowledge that they learn. There are essential understandings and essential questions to each unit. And then according to language proficiency, the knowledge that a student will acquire and the skills that they will acquire with the academic language, and this is scaffolded according to language proficiency. And again, looking at all aspects of of language. Our English language learners are held accountable. Both it would we we issue report cards alongside all other students in in our schools, and they also receive English Language Development progress reports. There's a summative assessment which has hap- is taking place right now and the principals refer to, and that is the yearly access two-point-oh test. The window opened on January sixth and the department has just extended it to March fourth because of the pandemic. This is an assessment that is very important because only if when our students score a certain level are we able to reclassify them from the program. And of course, our students from grades three to eight are also taking MCAS. As regards the reports that we receive from students, looking at last year, it was a very long testing window because of the pandemic. It went from January to May. The re- the reports that we received were at the district level, at the school level, and then individual school reports, individual student reports, excuse me. Last year, Southborough had ninety-five percent attendance rate. That was a very good attendance rate considering that we were in the pandemic. That was seventy English learners K through eight. Over this window, took the access test. Here you see the results per level. It is not like MCAS that they need to meet certain expectations. It's rather a measure of how well students are progressing in the development of learning English in the four language domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And the percentage of students making progress towards achieving a full language proficiency, it was eighty-one percent. This is a sample student report that parents receive. This is individual report. I'm covering it over two slides so that you can see the detail of it. So it's in the four language domains. This is a student who scored between a level two and a level three, so there is a range. It is one point in time, of course, because learning a language is fluid. It can look different in the different language domains. And then parents receive an explanation of overall what a student is able to do at the different language proficiency levels. And what we do with these reports, when we receive them, they are mailed home in English and in the in the parent's home language when needed. The reclassification criteria set by the Department of Education is when students achieve a four-point-two overall on the access test and a three-point-nine literacy score, we are able to consider the students for reclassification. We also take a look at other data points. And by we, I mean the English Language Development teachers. Look, taking a look at the students' reading levels, their independent writing samples, and also how they have performed on MCAS. And then a decision is made to reclassify or exit them from the program. And letters are sent home to the families. We also call the families to to let them know. But the letters go out in English and also in the home language when needed. So a few highlights that have happened is definitely the partnership that we form with our families and with our schools. The team of interpreters and translators that we have. I want to highlight the amazing work by Deb Young, Administrative Assistant to the Program, who is scheduling interpreters and translators throughout all of our schools. We pre-schedule parent-teacher conferences, large events. This is both for regular education and special education as well, evaluations, progress report, report cards. Because it is so important, as I said before, language is a means of communication. It is never a barrier. We did have a very successful summer enrichment program as I reported in the fall. And anecdotally, what is very interesting is that when students have done coding, they have recognized that they learnt coding when they attended the summer program a couple of years ago. And students who attended our summer program this year have written about different STEM experiences that they had during our summer. And of course, the friendships that they have made across schools. Professional development is also another great highlight. We continue to offer for the third year in a row and very well-attended Zaretta Hammond's book, Culture-Responsive Teaching and the Brain. It is taught by three of our English Language Development teachers. There will also be another offering in our March PD. The work that we continue to do with cultural competency across the schools, principals have reported on that today. And as you can see with a lot that we have mentioned this evening, we are addressing a strategic plan in ensuring equity of opportunity of our students, empowering learners in offering a rigorous curriculum, both in the classroom and the ELD curriculum that we are offering students. Healthy and balanced learners, making sure their social emotional well-being and that of their family is also addressed. Educator learning and leadership in what we're providing with professional development in our district. And as regards finance and operations, of course, there are resources that are needed in our program, the the summer program, which is funded completely out of Title III and everything that we, that the district provides for our program. I want to highlight the incredible collaboration that exists within each school as a very tight community to be able to offer the very best education to our English learners and our former English learners. And highlight, you know, the the everybody from administrators to custodians, cafeteria workers, everyone in the school is incredibly important to ensure the success of our students as they go through our schools. So thank you for the opportunity of sharing with you this evening. And I'm not sure if there are any questions that you'd like me to address.
You wrote it. That was terrific. Really. Are there any questions from any of the committee members for Rhoda at this point? Jim.
That was really interesting. Thank you for that presentation. I'm wondering if you could speak to whether or not you've know, have there been any changes given like the COVID situation in terms of how well people are progressing? I know there was that eighty-one percent number. And there was also the chart at the beginning where you compared the current learners versus the former learners. Yes. It looked like from that chart that at least the former learners' numbers were like significantly lower than earlier on. So I'm wondering if that has to do potentially with the pandemic or just where they are in the stage of moving on, you know, it could be a number of things.
Yes, you're right. So it is a number of things because it doesn't account for students that moved to Algonquin. Because students from Tradi in eighth grade that were that were former English learners are now accounted for in Algonquin. It is true that we weren't able to reclassify as many students. But again, it also depends where they are in the progression of of language. But we are, were more cautious also given the pandemic. And the, and what we, you know, what what we went through all of last year.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kim.
Rhoda, that was great. Thank you. My question is, I'm wondering, I don't know when it was, maybe last year you were talking about putting together a parent like parent support or like a CPAC for ELL families. Are, is that on your agenda sort of still?
Yes, for this year, the pandemics sort of stalled that last year. Even where we needed to, where we needed to focus, but that is on the agenda for this year. Thank you for mentioning it.
Okay, awesome. That's it. Thank you. That was great.
Kamali.
Thank you for that update, Rhoda. I love that many times that you kept reminding everyone that the multiple languages are just means of communication, right? It's always going to serve as that. I wanted to know, is there a way for parents to provide feedback on how their program has been for their child? So is this fairly manageable subset, less than forty people? Are they, is there a survey or a time of year that they can say, well, this is how the program is working for my child? And are they doing it? Are they doing it or you only get comments on a case-by-case basis?
So something I didn't mention is the the close connection that our English Language Development teachers have with the families in close communication because there's so many topics to talk about. So in a way, there's that their parents are able to, you know, they're in constant contact in asking how the students are doing. So we have never sent out a survey as is, although probably it's a very good point as part of the equity audit. I don't know if something's going to come through since there were questions there with the equity audit that pertain to English learners. But we have never surveyed our families. We've surveyed them with a summer school program. But we have not surveyed them as part of what we're doing in our schools.
Okay, so I'll follow up and just see how that's going or if there's some change there. And there was a bar graph that you did. I don't recall the page, but it was the one that listed entering, emerging, and the low development. And there was some other stages. And I was just wondering if for the future, it gives a count for each paragraph. But I would have, it would be helpful if I could see what the spread is. So if the low development is twelve, is it three in elementary, three in middle school, three in high school, you know, what the age, what the ranges are?
The breakdown across schools.
Across schools, yeah, that'll probably be easier than than grades, yes.
Yes, or across, yes, it would be across schools. So we do have that analysis done as well.
I know you just have to pick and choose what to present, but
And it's, it's just a, it's really to be able to see, all right, obviously, when that is frozen, we don't expect students to just stay at that level. Because over the months, there is growth, right? But we do have that analyzed by school as well.
Because what it would tell us, the story would tell is over the years, are we seeing that we have the majority of our students are entering? And they're doing that at Finn School, or are we seeing that maybe in the next few years we'll see that maybe the population in the community changes and entering starts in the in in Neri, right? I don't know, but that that's why I think that information should be helpful.
Yes, I see what you mean. And it's, yes, because we never know. So actually, we get students at all different levels at at the Finn School and also students entering at all different levels in the in our other schools. But again, the trend at Southborough is from preschool moving upwards.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just a quick follow to Kamali's first question. It almost sounds like based on, I guess I'm really repeating what you said, based on the close relationship between our folks and the families. You really have a, almost a continuous feedback loop that's occurring all the time. Is that, is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, well, in in a way, because families are, you know, we're, we need to inform them so so many aspects of the school life that they're, you know, they are always asking us or giving us, you know, letting us know. Some, some of the families do let us know what's working, what what they need more of. And especially we saw that during the pandemic, what things we needed to adjust or what families needed. You know, things done differently for them. So in that sense, is how we, we, we know what is going on with the families and what they're thinking.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Kamali is, okay, I don't see any other questions. Greg, I think, I don't know if you have anything to to add. I know that we're going to be moving to your report and you may want to be excusing some folks, but I'm going to turn to you.
Thank Rhoda for her leadership. As she mentioned, she has a great team of educators working alongside the faculty staff. I think they are an asset not only to our our English learners, but all students, all educators, and they really enrich the overall program for the entire student body. So thank you, Rhoda, for your leadership and please pass on a thank you to your team as well.
And also an asset to the community, you know, I I would say.
So I will move on to if it's the will of the committee to have the principals, I think they have, I think they have some homework that Stephanie assigned them tonight to go and do. So it's the will of the committee to dismiss principals, then I think they would greatly appreciate it.
I, I see no objections. So that sounds great. And thanks to the principals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
I'm cashing in my homework pass tonight, Ms. Ryan Horn.
I mean, honestly, no homework. My God.
Duly noted.
Kim, it's just reading. We assign reading, so pleasure reading.
Want to do extra math. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. Good night.
All right, so I will begin the superintendent's report to the committee in in your packet. This are the, is the enrollment data for January fourth, twenty twenty-two. And as you can see, we are at one thousand one hundred and forty-three students, nine students more than NASDAQ projected. And we are monitoring enrollment closely for FY twenty-three budget process in our class sizes are well within our, the committee's class size policy by two forty, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. If there are, oops, Katara.
Well, I just had, I know this came up in our, our little subcommittee capital schools research planning the other day about using the NASDAQ numbers versus using the projection numbers from the the other report that were actually sort of relying on a little bit more. So I don't know. We maybe don't need to really decide that right this minute, but I just wanted to bring that up as an issue that we might want to consider at some point.
No, Katara, I did make a note of that. And for the next enrollment report, we will have the RLS demographic data on that report. And just as a comparison, the RLS data for FY twenty-three is one thousand one hundred and fifty-two students. So there is a slight discrepancy. But we will be moving forward with RLS data, moving forward with enrollment reports.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, great, thanks.
Right, if there are no further questions, I'll move on um and have Becky share the FY twenty-two monthly general fund expenditure report. Thank you.
Thank you. So the monthly general fund report that's in your packet is as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And this actually marks the um end of the first six months, so we're halfway through our fiscal year um twenty twenty-two. Um, as of December thirty-first, we did have four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, or two point two nine percent remaining on the bottom line. In comparison to the same time last year, we had four hundred and one thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, or one point eight nine percent remaining. The one item that we are really closely monitoring is our substitute line. As you can see, we have expended over half of the budgeted amount for FY twenty-two. However, overall, I feel that we're in a good place at this point in the fiscal year. Um, we do meet on a weekly basis to review the budget, um, and uh I note no discrepancies.
Any questions? Um, it's not surprising to me that uh the substitute expenditures would be um. Maybe more than, certainly more than in some years, let's, let's.
Exactly.
Um, so would you like a, a motion to approve uh? The budget as uh as of December thirty-first?
Yes, until audited.
Until audited, correct. So I would uh look for a so moved. To approve the Southborough Public School District FY two thousand twenty-two budget monthly general fund expenditure report. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, until audited. Is there a so moved?
So moved, Kamali?
Molly has moved it, is there a second?
Okay, Kim.
And second is my Kim. Uh, I don't see any hands up for discussion, so this will be a roll call vote. Katura?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
So that is approved unanimously.
All right, next in your packet is the. FY uh twenty-three through FY twenty-nine uh capital plan. And the capital project that we're moving forward in FY twenty-three is uh the thin paving of the parking lot in the driveway. And I believe the, there is a meeting scheduled with the town's capital planning committee to present that project in more detail. Um, so that is up and coming. Um, and then the next two items in your packet are the budget cap, budget priorities and budget calendar. And I will um review those uh when I give my recommended budget presentation to the committee. So if there are no questions, I will move on to the recommend, recommended budget presentation. All right, just give me one moment to share my screen. All right, so I'm pleased this evening to present the FY twenty twenty-three recommended budget. Um, and I think that um. It's important to go through the presentation in its entirety. Um, I know the committee has seen this presentation several times, but for um the purpose of sharing this with the community, I think it's important. Um, I think in terms of the budget and the work that we do as a district, um, we are mission and vision oriented. Um, we spend a lot of time talking about what we want to accomplish. Um, the mission of the public schools of Southborough is quite simple, but powerful, it's to educate, inspire, and challenge all students. The vision um is that our students will be um prepared for the next grade level, next school, and next chapter um in their educational career. And we want students to leave uh being strong collaborators, critical creative thinkers, communicators. We want students to be socially, civically engaged, growth oriented, and healthy and balanced. Um, and this is much of the work and discussions that happen behind the scene. Um, that the leadership team, principals, and educators are engaged on a constant basis. In terms of um the budget uh process, it's important to to note that it is a significant uh process. That includes the input and feedback from many stakeholders. Um, from the district leadership team to principals, to educators, to um the town leaders, the school committee. Um, and it really begins early on in the academic year, it begins in September. Um, and the school committee, I think, uh. Reviews their budget priorities, the budget calendar, and really thinks about what it hopes to accomplish the budget process. Uh, in October, October, the team really focuses on preparing the preliminary budgets. Um, and much of the work happens at the school level, working with principals and educators. And the preliminary budget data is submitted to the finance team, where Becky and her team um synthesize those numbers and come up with a preliminary budget. Um, in November, um, the school committee, you know, approves its budget priorities. Um, we have um operational budget subcommittee meetings, I mean preliminary budget discussions in preparation for um a preliminary budget. In December, December, um, the superintendent presents the preliminary budget to the school committee. And then this evening, um, I am presenting the superintendent's recommended budget uh to the school committee. Um, we will be meeting with the Southborough Financial Advisory. Um, and also marching toward the public hearing, um, as well as Southborough Town Meeting. Um, to give the opportunity for the citizens to approve the budget. I will share that part of the work that we do is um having many conversations with um. The town administrator Mark Purple and his team and select boards. Um, there is a standing meeting with, you know, the school chair of the school committee, the chair of the select board, um, the town administrator. Um, the, the town finance director and Becky Poverino and me. And we have ongoing conversations around the larger context of the town budget, as well as the state budget, and those meetings are very helpful. And just a reminder to Roger that our next meeting is tomorrow morning at seven thirty.
I, I, I do recall, I do remember that, and I do know why you're reminding me. Thank you.
So um, but it is a collaborative um effort uh with the town and the school department. Uh realizes that the town, the school department is one department of many um in a larger town budget. In terms of looking at fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget variables, um, we identified three budget variables at this point in time. And the first is chapter seventy funding and new legislation. So we will not learn about chapter seventy funding until um the governor releases his budget. Uh, but also, we're waiting for more information around the implementation of the Student Opportunity Act. Partly, um, we are anticipating additional revenue from the Student Opportunity Act. In the area of out-of-district um transportation reimbursement. Um, the act phases in out-of-district transportation reimbursement over four-year period. Last year was the first year, and FY twenty-three will be the second year. Um, another variable is out-of-district special education funding, so waiting to hear what percentage that will be funded at. Um, and we're waiting for that information. And lastly, this is new um inflation. So um, we are seeing an increase in costs of goods and services. Um, that is having an impact on how far our dollar goes in terms of purchases. So we are monitoring that very closely, um, and this budget does take in into consideration inflation. So in two, in terms of um, you know, the budget priorities, so um. The school committee does identify each year um budget priorities um that are really important for the leadership team and principals and educators to. Uh, use when making difficult decisions around if there are finite, finite resources. Um, so the first top um priority for the committee is to fund the high priority items identified in the district strategic plan. Um, to implement innovative instructional practices that really engage students, um, developing their knowledge and skills. Um, providing all students access to challenging and culturally responsive learning experiences that meet their needs. Prioritizing social, emotional, physical well-being of students and staff. And demonstrating continual growth through professional collaboration and development to support best practices and programs. Um, furthermore, it's to maintain and improve sustainable, efficient, and attractive and well-maintained schools. Um, maintain student-to-teacher ratios, um, sustaining the multi-year technology cycle over new growth, maintenance. And then lastly, to recruit, maintain, and support high-quality staff. And I will share that um last year, the committee spent a lot of time updating its budget priorities to align with um vision twenty twenty-six. And again, these are very important in terms of our budget process and helping us as a leadership team um make decisions around uh limited resources. So in terms of where we are in the budget process. Um, preliminary budgets uh were presented to um the finance team in October. Um, we do engage and exercise as a leadership team in thinking about what if? There were no fiscal constraints on our budget, you know, what would we ask for? Um, and as a result, all of the requests the leadership team and principals and educators submitted. Um, represented twenty-three million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Which was a nine point eight five percent increase over fiscal year twenty uh two. Um, we, having conversations with um. The town uh and understanding the larger context, we knew that that wasn't feasible. Um, so we did um do some work around what reductions could we make from that preliminary budget request? Um, as a result, um, we brought in a preliminary budget of twenty-two million, um, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars. Which represented a four point seven five percent increase. Um, this is the budget that was presented to the Operational Budget Subcommittee and presented at the last meeting in December. Um, and since then, we've had additional meetings as a leadership team, and we, we have better data in terms of our numbers. Um, and we're able to reduce that budget by four hundred and eighty-four thousand, forty-one dollars. Um, in this evening, we are um recommending a budget increase of two point five three percent. Um, which is five hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine dollars, um, more than fiscal year twenty-two. So in terms of some of the, the budget increases, you know, you know, what comprises the five hundred and forty-nine, nine-dollar increase? Um, we're seeing a slight uh increase in transportation, um instructional hardware. Um, maintenance of buildings and grounds, we had to um, we had some procurement of um. Maintenance and ground contracts. And then lastly, a majority of the increase is um salary increases and closes. And again, the total budget increase is um a little over five hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. In terms of the offsets that we applied to get to um the budget number. Um, we applied FY twenty-two circuit breaker, special education reimbursement, um, which was a little under a million dollars. Um, the first year of circuit breaker, special education, transportation reimbursement, and this is that first year of Student Opportunity Act being implemented. Um, we had, we did see a number of educator retirements and leave of absences. Um, which totaled a little over four hundred thousand dollars. And then just line item reductions, again, looking at, you know, um, many of the line item requests and what we need and making sure that. Um, we were only asking for, you know, what we needed in terms of supplies and and line items. So the total budget offsets was one million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, twenty-five dollars. So this evening, um, the recommended budget presented to the committee is, again, twenty-two million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars. Which is a recommended budget increase of five hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine dollars, um, which is a two point five three percent. Um, increase over fiscal year twenty-two. Primarily, this budget is a level services budget, and I'll just point out that we have a high level of service um that we provide our students um in general. In terms of a couple of growth areas, um, so there are three areas um that we're expanding. The first is we are adding a special education classroom to support some of our learners who need specialized programming. We are seeing an increase in students moving from preschool to kindergarten who require specialized programming. And as a result, we're creating an additional specialized program. Um, in order to open that program, we have to staff it, so it includes a point five FTE, a special education teacher. Um, and this program is being shared with the Northborough District as well, so they will um also. Um, be including a point five FTE special education teacher to create a one point O position. Um, to support this castle program. And then in regards to um ESPs, the program requires uh three additional educational support uh professionals. Um, in addition, a growth area is um adding a point two FTE uh reading specialist. Currently, Woodward and Neri have a one point O, um, each have a one point O reading specialist. Finn currently has a point eight uh reading specialist, and adding the point two would make Finn's reading specialist a one point O. And then lastly, um, we are requesting a one point O um FTE reading tutor. Um, to be shared between Finn and Woodward, and really to support some of the work of our reading specialists. So the total increase of FTEs is four point seven, um, which represents a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollar increase. And then lastly, I'll just share, um, you know, the budget trends over the past um six years in comparison. Um, so the two point five three percent. I think is a um. Fiscally sound and educational responsible uh budget allows us to grow um and maintain the high level of services. And also fits in with the context of the larger um town's financial landscape. And I will stop sharing and be happy to answer any questions, and um Becky will, will join in answering questions.
Great, can you go, can you, can you go back to the share? Uh, would you mind? Um, let's see, wherever you were, go back, uh, uh, no, one more, one more, one more. Okay, oh, okay, there. So um, before I, I open it up, I, I just have a couple of uh comments slash questions. Um. First, are you um expecting a, a vote to approve tonight because you'd like to go into tomorrow morning's meeting with this budget voted, or not?
I mean, I think with the extension of the town meeting.
That's what I was thinking.
About, I think that, um, you know, typically, this is the month that the school committee would vote a recommended budget. Um, I think that um it's important to note that once voted, um, it can be voted to be decreased, but not increased.
Well, that's my.
So it might be why, it might be wise just to hold off on voting this evening, but that is the will of the committee.
Okay, well, that's, that, that was, that's, that's where I'm going, I'm going with that concern, because certainly, as I look at um. Um, you know, other than salary, and a lot of that is contractual, um, this is pretty thin. Um, so, um, there's, if there's still. One of the questions that I tend to ask is. Um, what were the last, what were the things that hurt the most to, to cut out of the budget? Um, I mean, that could be a, you know, not necessarily a fair question at this moment, but I'm sure you're thinking about that. And um, unless the, unless the committee is, is uh. Um, it, I guess, insistent that we vote this tonight, I think we're probably. Uh, better off to, to wait a month, and again, in light of the fact town meeting has been pushed off. I, I think I interrupted you, you were gonna respond to something I.
Yeah, I was just going to make a, a general comment around, you know, what's, what's the most painful part of this budget? Um, I will share that, that this, this budget process um was fairly painless. Um, we had the right number of people who, through attrition, were retiring. Um, we have a high level of service already, our class sizes are really strong. Um, we're maintaining really healthy class sizes as we look forward, you know, we're adding a program. Um, we have really strong supplies and materials. And I will so, also add that, um, what is. And I will also add that what is not represented in this budget, which is important for the committee to to consider. Is that we have a little over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in SO three money. That we're able to do some other innovative approaches and practices that that is. To SO three, but not necessarily part of this, this budget recommendation.
Okay, well. That said, I I would, I would be recommending get the committee to hold off on the vote, but you know, we'll hear what folks have to say. Kim, I think you're up first.
I'm fine with holding off for the vote, I just have a couple of questions. One, on the budget offset, the educator retirements and leave of absence, is that like last year? They retired and so we, or this school year they've retired and.
They're going to retire in FY twenty three, so.
So the ones we already know about basically.
Correct.
Okay, and do you, are we not replacing them? Or is it just less? Less.
Savings because.
Yeah, like savings or is it a combination?
Savings from their retirement and the 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 salary to replace the position.
Yeah.
Is less than.
So the, so, but the plan is to replace sort of every, every position.
Retires at a hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Replacing at sixty.
Okay.
That's where we're capturing savings.
Okay, perfect. And then you mentioned the Newcastle classroom. And then it was a move. That you saw more preschool to kindergarten, is that new classroom or that new program? Only kindergarten?
We can speak to that.
No, that would not be only a kindergarten class, we take a look at the distribution of students and we. We look at that, we currently have four classrooms and what we're saying is we need five total classrooms across the two districts. So we would reconfigure based on need and.
I see.
Case load.
And we're able to split with Northborough because of where the students are, basically, you already know which town.
Yes.
They are.
And you know, all of those preschool, some of those preschool meetings require. Some of those preschool kids require team meetings and all of those have not happened yet, so, so we're. We have about four of them moving from preschool from. From the preschool population over to the kindergarten that require a castle program.
I see, okay.
Only for.
Southborough only, okay. Okay, so that makes sense. And then Greg, there was a slide that was in the packet that's not presented, is that, are we, is that gone? For the teen chair?
Yes, so that is part of the conversations we had as a leadership team.
Okay.
Whether that was. Something we wanted to move forward, but then after conversations, we decided it wasn't a high priority.
Okay, perfect. And then last question, really probably for Becky, the SO three monies? Like planning for those in fiscal year twenty three, like when? Like, when do you do that?
Oh, that conversation is ongoing, we're, Stephanie and I are talking, I would say, daily about. The funds for SO two and for SO three, and so that is ongoing, we're working with departments and we're looking at. I think actually we've started to do some of, use some of the SO three for some of the professional development that we have coming up in March. And then we are moving forward with the tutoring program that was identified as well, so it is ongoing.
Perfect, and will we, do we see that in the? Like in the, the, the. Documents that are in the packet? Like as it happens, like each month with that, or does that stay separate?
Grant report, I know, Katara, you had mentioned that, that was helpful last year, so we will be moving that forward. And if I, I'll just quickly, you know, highlight some of the purchases or. Programs that we're hoping to kind of move forward with SO three money, so. You know, we're looking for purchasing amplification systems across our schools. We're looking at curriculum for SEL and health. Implementation of PD, early literacy screeners and decodable text, executive functioning. Translation services, tutoring services, so there's a lot of. A lot of programming that is included in that SO three funding.
And you're starting it, you're starting to try to spend that now, or you're planning for twenty three or both, basically?
Slowly starting to spend, we'll see a little expense. For now until the end of this just clear year and then, and then next year, a more significant expense toward those items.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Dora?
Yeah, I was gonna ask where my SO chart is. So, but that in all seriousness, that is really helpful to see, and I think as we sort of get through. Spending the funds, I know like the original SO funds are spent and we're in the middle of spending the rest and all of that. It's, it's really helpful to see the breakdown of where it's going and how much is left. I, I just had a couple of comments about the budget. One is that. I, I, I'm fine with putting off the vote until next month, given the delay in town meeting. And then also, I agree with what Roger said, that this just reminds me of a lot of our other budgets where it's very thin as far as the. Actual increased items that are not contractually obligated, so. You know, this is a. Looks very familiar with their sort of minimal increases and the rest is, is really just required increase. Based on contracts, so nice job going through it, I know it's, it is a process, even though I'm glad this year it was a little less painful than a. Then maybe some other years, but, but that looks good, and I had the, I had the same question as Tim about where this new classroom was going to be. It sounded like maybe it was going to be located at Finn, but maybe not, and I, I understand now it's going to be part of the whole arrangement of classrooms. So. Looks good, thank you very much.
Stephanie, do you want to just also, I mean, I, one thing I don't want the committee to lead within the community to lead with was, was thinking that. The budget doesn't include things we need, so there is funding for curriculum materials and so forth, do you want to speak to that a little bit, Stephanie?
Sure, are there specific parts of it that you?
We're talking about mathematics and.
Sure.
Those other.
Yeah, so there, there are a lot of different sort of curriculum. Conversations that are happening right now that we have budgeted, although the decisions aren't finalized, so for example, in the middle school, we're looking at our mathematics resources. And we actually have a meeting tomorrow and starting to look at. What are different materials that are out there and what are some of our options for thinking about new resources? Similarly, our science curriculum at the middle school level, the, some of the resources we use. We're at a point where we just need to make some decisions, partially just sometimes some of our. Contracts and, and so we have to decide whether we're going to renew them or whether we're going to look at other opportunities, so we're having those conversations in science. At the elementary level, we're already looking a year and a half out at our mathematics because that contract will end, and so. Looking at, do we continue with the same resources or end? Decodable texts, Becky mentioned in literacy is one of the things that we have. Or maybe Greg mentioned some SO money, that conversation is happening right now. Where reading teachers and Megan Kelty is the ELA coordinator are looking at. What are the needs? And that'll be happening before the end of this year, so that's because it's grant money. We'll be able to do that, so there's a lot of different conversations that are happening. Both, you know, short term and long term, and we're in constant conversation among us to make sure we have kind of the room in the budget. Depending on where the decisions go, because sometimes we have to budget before the decisions have been made. And then Becky and I are also always watching the funding opportunities from the state, which. Is a little bit like drinking out of a fire hose right now, the way those are coming at us, but there are some really good opportunities, so we're also trying to have. The ribbon our budget. And take advantage where we can of opportunities from the state. So, and then there's the SEL, there's a lot of different, you know, we're looking at assessment tools in SEL. To be able to get our baseline data around student SEL, so a lot of different conversations. I don't know if that's helpful.
Here's to me, thank you. Kamali?
Yes, and one of the other things, Stephanie, that I have noted is that growth in the language program is all still included in our. Plan and, and the budget as, as proposed. I was just gonna let the, the rest of my committee know that I'm fine if we voted tonight, I don't think we're going to change much between now and a later date and. Yeah, I, we spent a lot of time kind of going through it in detail, I think it's robust. That's my opinion, we don't need to wait, but I will go with the majority.
Jan?
I'm, I'm fine, actually, I think it's a good idea to wait, just in case we have any changes, gives us a little bit of flexibility, but. I just wanted to say, and this is just a comment, not a question, is that, you know, I've been on the budget committee now for, I think this is my fourth year on it. And you know, there's been some chatter on social media about like, we, you know, district decision to do this is a money based thing to get. More taxpayer money, or you know, there's a lot of like chatter like that or about profit and stuff like that, and I want to say that I think. It's really to like Greg and your teams really to be commended for the fact that that's never been the case in my experience is sitting on this committee, it's really been. Watching you, you know, fit in, in alignment with what the town expects, providing a level service budget. I encourage folks to look into the past budgets and see that that's been the case, so if you look at these budgets, there really isn't. Any big waste or anything like that, I think it's been, you know, like you all have done a really great job and just sitting on the inside and seeing some of that, I, I wanted to highlight. So please, if you have that perception in the community, you should go in and look at the budgets and see how we've, you know, really, you, you guys have really made it. A good effort to stay into what we need and not spend additional money that's not necessary, so thank you.
Any other comments? All right, Kamali, it sounds like at least you're, you don't have a strenuous objection to moving this till next month, thank you, so I think that we will. We'll look to vote this, we'll, we'll look for an update on this next month. Evaluate the update if there is any, and then plan to definitely vote it next month.
And I think that concludes the.
Jan, is your hand still up or is it just not down? Okay. I'm sorry, Greg, go, go ahead.
That, that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right, so educational policy. None at this time. I think all we're doing is distributing. The approved policies, there's no action. Personnel items, there, I know there was, that was in the, in the packet.
In your packet for review.
Anything, anything to, any questions on that or any comments you have on that, Greg?
I know, no, it's starting to look like more like a normal personnel report each month.
No communications at this time. I think we do have action on the minutes from the open meeting of December eighth. Two thousand twenty one, it's now a different year. I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Southborough School Committee Open Meeting on December eighth, two thousand twenty one, I'd entertain. So moved on that motion.
So moved, Kamali?
Kamali, is there a second?
So moved.
Where is that from? I missed it.
Katara.
Okay, I'm sorry. So are, are there, are there any, any? Amendments to the content of those minutes from anyone? Once, twice, all right, thank you, we'll do a roll call vote, Katara?
Was, was there a second or did I miss it?
No, I think that.
I think you were the second.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, I was, that gets fine.
You were the second.
My, my, I, my, it's so laggy, Zoom is so laggy for me today, I was on another one earlier today, it was terrible.
See, you, you just thought you were moving it, you were really second.
I'm just gonna say yes to everything, so I will vote yes.
Okay, it was Kamali moved it in your second, okay, Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that is unanimous. Do we want to talk about any specific agenda items next month at this point? Craig?
Recommended budget. ASR, we can do the ASR three update. And. I think that's all I have.
This the equity audit?
That will be at the March combined meeting.
Okay.
We also may have a. For the school's research. Subcommittee, there may be a presentation or some, some such activity, I did also, I'm gonna. Can I share something, Roger, or do you want me to wait until the sharing?
Oh, no, oh, well, well, let's see, we're probably almost to the sharing, so if this is, if this is kind of just outside. I'm fine with that, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so on the, so the capital planning committee apparently is having a public. Presentation next Thursday evening at seven thirty, I think we'll all get notified of it at some point, but. It's to discuss the final results of the town space needs study. And obviously that it, you know, impacts the schools and directly relates to the work that we've been doing on the. On the school's research subcommittee, so. Roger, you and I haven't had a chance to really connect, but I don't know how many, you know, if, we'll technically call a meeting so that we can all. Those of us who want to attend can be in attendance and, and hear the presentation without violating any, you know, open meeting laws, but. But that's happening next Thursday, and then at some point, there'll be a presentation to the school committee. With sort of the results and proposed next steps of the. That, that subcommittee, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that will be on next month's agenda or not, but that's upcoming.
Yeah, I think that we would post a meeting. I guess be a joint meeting or a simultaneous meeting, if you will, because I would. If we get, if we get more than, more than two folks of the committee, we need, we would have to do that anyway. I, I'm, I'm thinking, so thank you. I'm thinking. That probably some of us would love to hear if there's anything to update. On. On the S, you know, the before and after school kind of partnership. Movement, and I don't expect that there would have to be, but if there is any, I think we'd probably love to hear it. No expectation on that.
I think also Roger.
Kind of expectation.
I, I, you know, I have. I'm always challenged to meet your expectations, Kim.
I know, I mean, if we're gonna, I mean, if we're gonna do registration in February.
That's why.
Talk about it, yeah.
That's, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah.
We also, Roger, have and Katara, the capital planning, school research subcommittee. For the February meeting as a placeholder.
Yeah, and we'll get a draft agenda out, certainly. Enough ahead of time, so if folks think of something they want to add either then or even before then, that, that's obviously always perfectly fine. All right, I think we are moving to audience sharing. And let me just see if there are any hands up. Kristen, I see your hand up.
Yes, can you hear me?
You bet.
Great, thank you, I am going back to the SDP discussion, which, you know, again, I'm also very happy that an arrangement was worked out that leaves SD. SDP in place, the one question I, I have, and, and let me state that I'm, I'm asking this as a citizen. And not as a member of the Recreation Commission, because I am a member of the Recreation Commission, but this is not something that we have discussed. There was several mentions of. that we have discussed. There was several mentions of enrichment programs. So what it sounded like to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, or, or in the next meeting, you know, looking at outside opportunities above and beyond the extended day program, which would also take in funding, you know, coding was one of the things that was referenced. I do fear that this is competition with recreation, recreational after-school programs or RAP that are known as. And so would appreciate the opportunity. So I don't think we want to rap has, or excuse me, recreation has always had a very good relationship with SDP. And I wouldn't want to see that become a competition, which would be kind of weird, right? It'd be like the town competing with the town. So I would just ask that, and then I know you're not looking to launch the enrichment programs right away, that was stated. But when the time comes or as you're considering it, I think that that has to be a discussion sitting down with recreation. My initial thought process, and again, we obviously have to sit down and talk about it, is that if there are opportunities for enrichment programs, perhaps we could run them through the recreation program, enhancing that. So again, I just wanted to make that point that we, we really need to think carefully about that before launching new programs. Thank you.
Those are good comments. Thank you. Obviously no way to, no way to comment on that tonight, but thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. I see none. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. It is 9:43 PM.
So moved by Kim.
Moved by Kim. Is there a second? All right, second by Kamali. I'm seconded by Kamali. Kamali, roll call vote. Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody, the committee and, and the district staff.